Could you please pray for us?
Sure. Father, we thank you tonight for your grace and your mercy. And we pray for those who may be on harm's way tonight, Father, that you'd put them in the palm of your hand and protect them. Be with those that are sick and afflicted. Let us say and do those things tonight, Father, bring glory and honor to your name. We ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone. If you haven't, we have the sign-in key. If you sign in. All right, we have the minutes in front of us. Let's take a few minutes to go over them. Steve was here.
Couple, yeah. Amy is listed twice, so.
It's just everybody was.
I think Steve was supposed to be the other Amy.
And I added Steve.
There you go.
I'm here now.
And then I think his last name needed an extra L. When in, it was a couple of sentences. Dan was listed there. Yeah.
I want to move that we approve the council minutes dated March 13, 2020. Well. Yes, I'll move that that it be approved with edits.
Motion made by Andy.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Anton. All those in favor? Okay, let's move on. Financial review.
We have a copy of your fly monthly reports. Doing it a little different. This one is the schedule of balances. So it is everything beginning to end with receipts and expenditures and the ending balances versus the other one that we've just, was showing the same thing on both sides because that report is actually the treasurer and the auditor side balancing. This is it. There's also a fund that shows the percentages of balances that have been spent year-to-date at each meeting. I'm going to start providing those so that you know how much people have spent and the percentage-wise or the total to the year or how much they have left. That'll be a good report to look at in June to when, just before we go into budget hearings. For the budget hearings, I would like to, by the end of May, send out the pre-budget forms to all of them. Hopefully to have them turned in by June. We can kind of gander at them a little bit, get them to you guys by the first of July for your budget hearings that are scheduled the first week of August. That'll give you a little over a month to look at them and work with your departments and try and figure out where to make adjustments and just moving the timeline up. DLGF has also offered to come and do a pre-budget meeting in either late April or mid-May. I figured if we could just get them to come maybe and do the May meeting in, in that a way that you're already, already here and get 15, 20 minutes and outlook. So, but again, we have 1.3 million. That still has to last you guys. And that's in the county general fund. The last couple of pages are all your grant funds. And you'll notice most of them are in the negatives, but those are because we need to do transfers and/or their reimbursement funds. So those will eventually come out of the red.
And then in our last meeting, we talked about a report on ARP, lost revenue, and where to spend, where things are going to be managed for that. You plan to have a report later on that?
Yes, we have to present that to the commissioners. And then hopefully I can get it emailed out to you guys. I'm hoping to have that by the 19th for them. We're looking at the big funds. Dee and I did go over it a little bit earlier today. We're looking at maybe all of the insurance. 200,000 that was, because it's a contract and not salary, we can move like the county attorney into that line item or that fund. So we're looking for the big dollar amounts. And then we'll have to go back and pull some of the bigger ones. But between insurance and the contracts on some of them, we'll be able to move them over. And we can only use the general fund to move the, for the loss of revenue. We can't touch any of the other funds to move over. So that'll, and 972,000 is the amount. We're looking at the 524, 524,000 for the payroll clearing and 148 for the highway. So that's the amount we're looking forward to get moved. So hopefully have a list presented to the commissioners and then I'll email it out to you and hopefully maybe have all the transfers done by your May meeting.
Kind of a long time coming, that. Does anybody have any questions for Sheila? Okay. Go on to old business. The time management or pay for payroll review. Want to go listen on that, Sheila?
I'm sure most of you know, and I had sent out an email, a follow-up at the commissioners meeting. They had voted to send out comments and contracts with Pay Corps at that time. Gary apologized to the department heads and that desperately were in need of it and that, but that it was not going to be dealt with at that time. We still are left with time management as an issue, which is the one thing that all 10 of you agreed on, on how we needed to move forward. Yes, there are still options. I think we need to slow down, which was part of what I was saying on the Pay Corps was let's slow down, make sure everything was in order. So that being said, I still think we need to review as many options as we can. There are a few companies out there. If it's just time management or time management and payroll. A couple of the companies have suggested to just start with time management and work your way in, get familiar with the clocks and that kind of a system before you try to do it all at one time. So I just, we need to pursue other options and work on it. I, you know, we can try to get a meeting and get them here to meet with you guys and the commissioners. It would be a contract. So obviously the commissioners would have to vet it first before it would come for funding requests.
I personally would. I mean, we all agree that, and if we postponed it, we wanted to do something done because this is very needful and should have been implemented a long time ago. I think we knew that Pay Corps wasn't really going to work. I would like, personally like to see the other companies that are compatible with LAU come in and give a presentation. Get that, you know, we want to work with the commissioners, of course, and the department heads and have, I mean, have everybody be on board on how we could proceed. So does anybody else have anything to say? Do the other ones that you have listed, do they include HR also, any of them?
I know the right stuff does. And abortion of, not in the LAU time management. That is just a time management system, but their actual payroll program does. You also have advanced stuff, I believe, or advanced management is one of them. So there's three or four.
Are they real people or just?
Just, just part of the system where you contact them or email them and, and, you know, say, hey, I'm Amy Casebeare and I want to change my deductions or things like that. So it's a direct contact with the company that would be hired if it was done.
Because I think that's important, something we need also. Does anybody else have anything to say on that subject? I think we need to keep, continue to pursue this. All right, I think nothing else is needed to be discussed. Let's go on alcohol coverage board appointment.
There was an article put in the paper requesting for people to, that were interested to send letters. I did not receive any unless you as council members received letters or phone calls directly.
Does anybody else, anyone that would be interested in being on that board?
Maybe she would.
There you go. Great. There we go. All right. Love you, Dad. Anybody want to make the motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna get that motion.
Is that made? Motion for it? Yes. Motion made by Nick, seconded by Andy. Any discussion? All those in favor? Great.
Congratulations. Sounds good.
All right, records request ordinance fees.
Dana?
I went through, made edits that were requested and submitted it all back to you. And you guys the final.
Yeah, and follow-up to our discussion at the last meeting. It seems like everything that I had notes on were either addressed or incorporated in. I don't know if anybody else had anything additional.
Sheila, is this a problem for your guys' office to deal with this?
On the fees? It's individualized in departments on the majority of it. So they would be collecting them. Where it wasn't, they would just be receipted in, like on a monthly report of collections. So, and your ordinance number would be 2023-004. And.
000.
Three zeros and a four. Here's a copy to sign if you guys approve it.
Was it me to read it again or was it?
Do we have to read it in its entirety?
Well, it'll be placed in the paper and it will be attached to the minutes. So it can be summarized.
And the department heads are all satisfied with the, the department heads affected are all satisfied with the rates?
As far as I know, again, some of the rates are set, preset by the state depending on which departments that they are. And he's gone through and, and again, based on the notes from the last meeting and made a couple of adjustments to those rates and being able, again, to at least charge. Paperwork was going out in toners and cartridges and.
So if it is, or once it's passed, does it have to then be published basically for 30 days?
Plus.
So published twice, 30-day period type of thing? And then it would become effective at that point? Well, I'll go and make a motion that the council approve ordinance 2023-0004, which establishes a fee schedule for records under the Access to Public Records Act as presented. Also get that motion.
Motion made by Anton, seconded by Andy. Any questions?
Sheriff, no problem. You guys doing this in your office, collecting these fees, dealing with this? Chris, any problem in your guys' office or the labs?
All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay. I now open the public hearing. There are different appropriations.
These were the four that were presented at your last meeting that you made motions to advertise for the public hearing for tonight. They all have been vetted. The funds are available in their accounts. You can either approve them all as one or individually.
So the auditors portion was just an upper limit estimate?
Yes.
No need to really fine-tune that?
No, because it was just, depending on the timing of someone coming in and whatever isn't used stays in the general fund.
All right.
So.
Got it.
The WTH bill, again, that was the annual bill for the 5319. Donna had presented you the WSI thing. She did tell you guys that she thinks she can get it cheaper. However, you guys went ahead and advertised the 6600 for it and then the 300 for the interpreter bill, which that has already come in in the cash balance. And it just needs to put in that line item. So those were the four for the public hearing tonight.
Sheila, I have a question. Who is our interpreter right now? Is it Amelia?
I would have to look it up.
Okay. All right.
I think there was actually two of them.
Yeah, they use individual, but there also is a service, I believe.
That's what I, okay.
You know, that takes whatever language is needed and then.
Right. Kind of like a sub teacher.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you need to open a hearing on this.
I do.
Okay.
Now that we went through all of them, I want to move that we approve the additional appropriations as stated.
Motion made by Andy. Is there a second? A second.
Does that include all three?
Yeah, I'll move through. For the auditor at $35,000, the WTH annual fee of 5319, the court interpreter grant at 300, and WSI quote at the high end of 6569? Yep, okay.
A second. Motion by Andy, seconded by Andy. Any questions?
Well, I should just read there's actually four. Thank you.
No problem.
All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay, I now close the public meeting. All right, new business. The Eagleview contract.
Yeah, I just want to step back in here and say we're moving forward. We should have fly over this fall. Give us new imagery. There was a little bit of change. What we were talking about originally was change finder won't mean anything to you guys. It's going to, where they take the old map or the new map and lay over the old map and tell us what's different. The problem is our map's so old that they have another product that they're going to take our sketches from our office and lay over the new layer. Or anything that's going to vary or different will get those errors and/or new construction and/or lord knows what's out there. We don't know what's out there. So essentially this time, this year, this will happen every three years. This first round, we will hopefully get everything actually dialed in where it should be. And then the next flyover will change into the change finder. It actually is probably a $45,000 annual value that we got them in at under 30,000. So we, it's in my budget. I just want to come back.
You're happy?
I'm ecstatic. It's going to be a big thing for the campaign. Make, very helpful.
And the cost, did it, you know, back in the fall, there was a little bit of discussion. Did it come in pretty much?
I told them come in under 30, because that's what I'm asking for. And the sketch inspect or whatever they call that was actually considerably more. But I beat them up long enough that we got it down into the 30,000 or under.
So when we had budgeted it in the fall, our projection at that time is pretty much on target. Okay.
Yeah, we came in, I mean, it's under, but we came in pretty close.
Now, are you going to have to send the guy out to?
We'll still have to send the people out. But it will cut back on a lot of things because if you look at our map now, it's what, from 2018? Base 2023, how many things have changed? This will be every three years from now on. So we'll have pretty new data. So if somebody comes in and they built something or something new, most likely a lot of these things we're going to be able to pull up on the computer and look at rather than have to go right by.
The permit will help a lot.
Yes. Yep. So that's really all I got. I appreciate it.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Just for appropriation of new requests.
Library board is listed first. See Ginger sitting out here. Again, she provided you guys with an explanation and a packet vote. There are two signature sheets in your green folder. If you guys approve this, we need both of them signed so we can have one and she can take one.
Okay.
There's a spot for each one of you to sign.
And just for the record, this is, okay. This is our money, right?
Yeah.
Probably what you say this is.
This is the library.
Said you do.
Yeah. They all had to get questions, so that's our money.
Well, we do have, yeah, it's money they got new folks that. Questions that aren't.
Again, they have a library reserve fund. That is where they're asking for this additional appropriation to come from for the 120,000 total. It's not out of the county funds. However, they're still required to go through the state DLGF and additional appropriation process. If approved, again, she can explain to you what their projects are.
It will not have any effect upon the tax return.
On the law, is it?
No effect upon the tax return.
That's right. This is money we already have in the savings account. I do have a list of what the funds are for, if you want to see that. This is just our rough estimates, but we got this just to, so we know how much to ask for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I mean, a big amount of money, a lot of things on there that aren't disputed. I haven't been over your way in a while. But where does this pay you financially as far as the reserve fund, as far as future planning and?
First, future planning. This comes from the library improvement reserve fund. That's exactly what it's for. It's for building things and. This is only from the interest that we've gained on CD for that fund. So, and we'll still have money in just the interest.
So what is the balance in the fund now? Do we have a dollar amount in there? I'm just curious.
The total fund right now is at $395,162. It's just the interest amount is 139,450.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the request as presented. And also get that motion.
Motion made by Anton, seconded by Andy. Any questions? All those in favor?
Thank you.
We'll get this thing done.
Thank you.
Then sign it. I want to pick them up and do it by tomorrow if it's easier.
Appreciate all you guys do.
Public safety fund is the next one on the list. That was sheriff's department for $10,000 for uniforms. There's a couple of options here. Can I talk? Again, their balance is only $279,000 and something. The exact list here. We're not sure what fuel and mills are going to do for the remainder of the year. So I would caution using their balance. It is possible. I mean, it's, I don't want to say it's just 10,000, but it would possibly be a better one-time expense from the riverboat fund to help try to reserve that cash balance if there's an emergency of some kind or you're running low on both fuel and mills. I don't know where you're at with mills. Fuel's a little bit ahead only because you had an additional or an incumbency of 35,000, but it's still going to eat it up pretty quick.
So this is currently out of uniforms. The appropriation request, you're saying that because of the possible crunch, that maybe just transfer out of riverboat to uniforms?
Just the riverboat.
Just the riverboat.
Now, if you remember back when the budget was being developed, there was a number of recommendations made to make the budget work. And one of, this is one of those that was cut. So I think the logic then was to come up with the money somewhere else. Is that right?
Yes, the logic at the time was to use commissary.
Okay, and so that, the decision now is to not use the commissary fund
Right.
to serve that for other uses, right?
Yes, to some extent. The commissary fund likely will not be able to fund it due to our, uh, our shortage of inmates at the moment.
Yeah, well, yeah, the numbers are low, which is, that's good. And plus, you did have to buy a vehicle, which you use commissary from anyway, which helps the fund more so than this did. So uh, but you know, I do think it's a bit of a thin margin on this fund, at least this early in the year, not knowing what's in store for us, particularly with the jail and the fuel and the meals. So I wouldn't particularly have an objection to using the riverboat, you know, fund if that's what everybody's comfortable with.
Do you think in one time, Anton?
Right, it'd be for this year, so.
What we got in the riverboat?
Hundred and ninety-five thousand and something.
You want to put in more than that?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion then that we advertise for appropriation up to ten thousand for uniforms for the sheriff's department as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Anton, seconded by Nick. To, so this is, this is my question. So you said as presented, do you really mean instead of taking out of the public safety fund?
Yeah, the as presented refers to the dollar amount and the use that they're proposing, but the riverboat fund would be what we would advertise and use for funding.
Okay.
Are there any others? You know, there were other items. Now, some of them weren't as big, but there were a couple other items that had been zeroed out or lowered in that estimate back when budget was being developed. Is there anything else that is gonna come back up to bite us here or that we need to be planning for, or can some of that be managed separately?
There was a, right, a little over twenty-some thousand dollars that was cut to give the raises. So that will need to be put back into your twenty-twenty-four budgets when they come in, just like this ten thousand. Those numbers will need to be rolled back in. Remember, they only brought in three point two five million this year. So I don't look for that. I look for that to increase some, but you gotta figure out if you're not gonna include that twenty thousand that was cut for raises, you are gonna have to put it somewhere in budgets.
And wasn't some for V-volved rotations too, which we've kind of already invested that? So we should be okay there.
Hope so, yeah.
Yeah. And this wasn't even budgeted?
The, the thing, it was, it was cut from the budget
Okay, along with the
to implement the raises ahead of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so I'm, I'm thinking just like what Anton said, if there's anything else you can think of that. Okay.
And you know, you, and you look at the, the budget report that you got and, you know, utilization and obviously because of the, the inmate count, you know, medical is a little less than normal, so you're a little bit ahead there. The same with food and meals. Insurance is kind of a known entity. Gas, oil, and lube. Nothing, I mean, it's a little, maybe a little bit ahead, but you buy in advance, so timing's a little different there. I don't know, I just, it'd probably be wise to proceed with that.
So the motion's already been made. Is there any other questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Okay, so I am asking for just to appropriate it out of my cash balance. I, I have plenty, I have enough to, to cover this. This is for a addition to our WTH contract. This would be for what's called live events. So in real time, if there is a road closure or if there's a tree down, it can be implemented on the website and on the local computers that have access to this. So it's in real time. Once it's put there, it's, you know, uh, if there's flooding, stuff like that. Um, so it, it would be, I think, beneficial. Several other counties have this option where the highway department uses it, other departments use it to implement that stuff, so.
So they would have, and no cost to them, your hand board out of your address?
I would need, right, yes.
EMS could use it, sheriff could use it, highway could use it.
It would be, yes, it would be all, the, we had discussed that nine oh one would possibly be the ones to implement the information that's put on there. But yes, I would pay for it. I pay to month the yearly installment. It's forty-three hundred dollars for the setup. This would be placed on several computers with logins to access it, and then it's seventeen hundred dollars a year to pay for it, to keep it up.
How does this run with what we've given the assessor? Well, is your
No, this would be totally set. This would actually work with the online website that we currently have, the GIS website. So if there's a tree down on a road, you can go to the website and see, like, and it will show you everywhere on there that there's road closures, bridges out.
So this is based on that?
No, this is, someone inputs it into the computer and then in seconds it will be uploaded. So like with the storm that we recently had, that could have been implemented to show what roads had trees down, what roads had different issues so that the other departments could see it, plus the public could see it.
And the public. Okay, what kind of, what kind of cash fund do you have?
Um, my, my building department fund basically would pay for this.
And how much, how much did you got your cash fund?
Fifty-four, fifty-four thousand.
Fifty-four thousand, okay.
The public can get access to this also?
Yes, it would be, it would automatically be
Wow.
within seconds be placed out on the website.
That's great.
Oh, and there's Facebook. Like, we, basically, if I'm asking for an additional, like, three, uh, thousand dollars for advertising to advertise trying to get people
So people use them?
to the website to use this and implement, because there's a lot of stuff on the GIS site. There's tax information. There's a lot of information out there that, you know, people could, could get. How much they paying in property taxes, you know, how much they do with property taxes.
So thanks, man.
You had, you, oh, I'm sorry. Um, you had a, a, I mean, where they came in, made a presentation, is that?
Yes, mhm, yes.
And I would have let it have been there. I didn't know about till
Yeah, and, and
after the fact.
Yeah, we were trying to get it out as, as to as many people as possible. Um, I do have a, a presentation that I can email you all if you wanna see it. It, it, it's from, uh, North Carolina, I believe, um, when they had a, a disaster, I think it was hurricane. And it shows how they implemented it down there.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good because, I mean, the more we know about it, the more we can kind of get the word out as well. And so, yeah, that would be great.
Maybe, but who would be implementing? You know, is that why Alan's here?
No.
I, you know, I see a poll of things.
No, and it would be the highway department would have access to it. Nine oh one would have access to it. There are, I would be the admin to it and I'd give everyone permission to.
So the public would be adding to it?
No, no, it would be online.
Take it, take it receiving.
The, the GIS, yeah, the GIS website that is for the public, it's free to the public. We pay for that. So that's, that's part of the fees that I pay. The ninety-two hundred dollars I pay here, that's to maintain the website part of it. So that gives updated, uh, parcel information, property card information. All of that information is out there on that website. There are links to our county website to that. And the other thing would be is that we would put a link to at the top of our county website that would say live events. And all they have to do is click on that and it would send them to the county website.
It's good, it's a good idea.
I, I have, I have been on it and it is amazing. So, I mean, you can, what you can
You can find out and, and honestly, it's, it's updated as soon as the auditor's office updates it in their computer. I upload it into mine, pull it in in the morning, the next day it's out there to the public. So, but this, this will be in real time.
Yours, yeah.
As soon as it's placed there, within seconds, it would be out on, on there for the public.
And that, so there's no IT has to set anything up?
Yep.
Is there a limit as to how many can access it a lot?
And not, no, huh, no.
I saw, uh.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we allow this appropriation, that we, it needs to be advertised. And I add that in my motion. And the amount of, it is seven dollars, sixty-three dollars?
Yeah, yeah, I, I added in the advertisements so that I could advertise.
And will you take that out of your cash fund?
I'm taking it out of my cash balance.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Nick, seconded by Anton. Any other questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Court employee payout, is that our Anton Keeler?
That is, uh, Lynn Walters, just retired. The amount is five thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. It's an additional appropriation you have been paying for all of them for the last year and a half out of the riverboat fund. For the county personnel policy, they're to be paid out at the next check. So that, again, that total to be paid is the fifty-two, sixty-eight, twenty-three.
And you wanna take it out of, because we have been taking it out of the riverboat.
We have taken all the others, yes.
Okay. So I make a motion then. Uh, it's five thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents, is that correct? Taken out of the riverboat to, or she's, she's retiring, is that right?
She is.
Okay.
If it's been made by Nick, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Amy. Any questions or objections?
So the, the only concern I have is that when you look at the shuffle of the employees that fill these positions, there's gonna be about, um, twenty-seven to twenty-eight hundred already in the budget that can be used to offset this cost. And I would like to see that taken care of first and then the excess come from riverboat.
Okay.
That, that's just my opinion on it because, um,
Well, that's, that's a good statement.
Yeah, I mean, it's in making sure their obligation is met, obviously, for the new employee configuration. But, uh, it doesn't cover all of it, but it would cover more than half of it and then So I'll make a, an amendment, a motion to amend the original motion to, uh, allow the auditor's office to confirm the exact amount of, uh, the offset. Apply that first and then what's left, take from riverboat.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
So who's, who's seconded the first motion?
I think Amy.
Okay, so we need to vote on the amendment first.
Okay. The, the amendment first, amend them.
Yep.
All right. All those in favor of the amendment? Motion carried. Now we need
Yep, original as amended.
All right. All those in favor?
Thank you.
So gee, you want to go through and figure this because this still needs to be advertised for an amount. And I know there was a shuffle of employees that have moved from within, but there's not gonna be a lot to gain other than the time period because they all have been here. They're all in perf and longevity and those kinds of things, but we will figure it.
Yeah, I, and I, again, I did rough math with Judge Hanlon earlier. And we have seventy-five percent of the year left, so we have to find, we have to make sure to figure that in. Again, rough math, about twenty-eight hundred. So we'll, we'll confirm for sure.
So you're thinking around twenty-five on riverboat then?
Yeah, so whatever this maximum is, less the exact figure that's, uh, that's confirmed with the auditor.
Okay, the reform grant.
So I talked to Judge Hanlon on this one. This is another one of those situations where they receive money for a purpose. It gets put into there, but it has to be appropriated back out in order to use it. It's just like the ones we did earlier in the agenda. And if I'm not mistaken, there's two requests from the court. There's the court reform grant for thirteen seventy-five and the interpreter grant, another interpreter-related grant for seven hundred and sixty fifteen.
Again, both of these are monies that they receive as reimbursement, so the money's in the cash balance. It just needs to be appropriated to the line item.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve set amounts from the, uh, which currently refunded to the general fund and needs to be put in their original line item. That said,
I'll second that.
Motion made by Andy, seconded by Anton. Any other question?
Do we have a figure on that?
Seven sixty fifteen is the
Four, seven, seven? Oh, thirteen, okay.
If there are no other questions, all those in favor? Motion carried. Okay, that's one to tax payments.
I'm gonna answer any questions that you have. Any recommendations?
So we are considering Hoosier Energy, Mater Mill, and Owen Valley Winery. From my understanding, Keeler has not gotten the, uh,
I haven't seen anything on Mater Mill.
I don't have Mater Mills, yeah.
Mater Mill, okay.
I have emailed them since this meeting started to let them know.
So Hoosier Energy is just their compliance report. That one's easy because there's an MOU and it's a guaranteed amount and it goes towards the bond for the sewer project. There's really not much more to it. So do we need to make a motion to then accept the report or what, what kind of action is needed for them?
I can go ahead and read aloud to you the review, uh, recommendation from the review committee. And then at the end of that, if you would go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and prove that. This is the last year for this abatement. They have fully completed all of the requirements. And I think it needs to be observed that they have done that very well.
Yeah, that's amazing.
If you would. Is this okay? All right. So now therefore be resolved by the Spencer Owen Economic Development and Abatement Review Committee as follows. The review committee finds that Hoosier Energy has performed the necessary improvements upon real estate pursuant to the terms of the tax payment. Two, the review committee finds that Hoosier Energy has met and exceeded all requirements which are in accordance with the original statements and benefits. Three, the review committee now finds no non-compliance issues. Four, the review committee has reviewed the annual CF1 real property forms of the annual reporting period. Five, the Spencer Owen Economic Development and Abatement Review Committee
Five, the Spencer Owen Economic Development and Abatement Review Committee is directed to provide a copy of this resolution to the property owner, the Owen County Auditor, and Department of Local Government Finance. And six, furthermore, as the record show, Hoosier Energy has been the model of performance for the abatement process and is an exceptional partner and supporter to the citizens of Owen County. And this has been duly resolved and adopted on the thirtieth day of March, twenty twenty-three by the Spencer Owen Economic Development Incorporated and the Abator Review Committee, having been passed by a vote of five in favor and zero opposed.
Does anyone have any questions for Marcy on the Hoosier Energy tax abatement?
There are two forms in your green folder that need signed.
So do we, do we need to make a motion to accept that?
Going to accept it, yes.
Well, I'll go and make a motion, we accept it.
It's made by Anton, is there a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Andy. Any other questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. Alan and Mater Mill.
I can go ahead and read out recommendations along the lines.
Please.
Now therefore be resolved, the Spencer Owen Economic Development and Abatement Review Committee as follows. One, the Abatement Review Committee has reviewed the annual C F one personal property and C F one real property forms of the annual reporting period. Two, the Abatement Review Committee finds that Mater Mill has performed the necessary improvements upon the real estate and installed the manufacturing equipment pursuant to and exceeding the terms of the tax abatement. Three, the Abatement Review Committee finds that Mater Mill meets the wage requirements pursuant to exceeding the terms of the tax abatement. Four, even though the applicant has met and exceeded their capital investment and wages for the tax abatement requirements, there is a substantial non-compliance on the key component of employment. The Abatement Review Committee recommends that the county council seek legal advice to amend the tax abatement with Mater Mill based on a continual non-compliance with the workforce obligation. The Spencer Owen Economic Development and Abatement Review Committee is directed to provide a copy of this resolution to the property owner, the Owen County Auditor, and the Department of Local Government Finance, due to resolve on this thirtieth day of March, twenty twenty-three, with a vote passing five in favor and zero opposed.
Five in favor of the abatement or?
Five in favor of the county council seeking legal advice to amend the tax abatement.
All right, so are they unable to be here tonight?
Um, they are more than welcome to come to any of, I mean, I don't know if they're not here or not, so I mean, I mean, they're not here, but it's not because we didn't suggest that they were here and they could come.
All right, so.
We went, we did this last year and I remember that COVID was a, a big reason for that, but I wouldn't think that would still be. So, I'm in favor of what you just read.
Yeah, I mean, I think we want to be, I mean, obviously, there's compliance in other areas, but it, there's that one part. And so it's, it's one of those things where you kind of hate to take away the whole thing and that's where the recommendation, I think, is that maybe we seek legal advice and, and talk with them and come up with some kind of a, maybe a new abatement arrangement that more accurately depicts what's going on now on the ground. And that might be something that's maybe a lesser abatement, for instance, or something along those lines, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, I, this, this tax abatement was, uh, put into place before I came on the council. Um, I'm not sure I would have been in favor of it in the beginning and I, I still feel that way, there's, I mean, different issues. But the fact that, you know, we're looking at, what, two, two years in a row that they have not been compliant on that.
What about the third year?
And we said one more, here you go.
Last year, we did have a pretty solid discussion about that.
Were they compliant the year before?
And this is then the year.
They have been compliant on their capital investment and they have been compliant on their wages, uh, the first year. In the second year, they were compliant on their capital investment and they increased their wages to meet that requirement. And it was in that second year after COVID, um, that.
Okay.
All of the entities that had an abatement were kind of given some extra time in lieu of twenty twenty, okay? And then that it was addressed that, okay, we're kind of beyond that now and we definitely need to see some increase in workforce. Obviously, the Compliance Review Committee is there to make sure that they're compliant. And so therefore, there was a line drawn kind of in the sand last year saying, hey, we need to work on this. And now at, at this juncture, this year, it was determined after receiving that information that they had not increased their numbers in their workforce, that it was the duty of the Compliance Review Committee to suggest this suggestion to the county council.
And to me, the workforce is probably one of the most important components. I mean.
You're talking the number.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember last year, the very specifically was, they were not getting applicants. They just wasn't getting anybody to respond to this application.
But that, that could be a problem, you know, with anybody, but that doesn't mean that you are going to be eligible for a tax abatement.
My concern overall is, we got a lot of businesses, a lot of farmers, a lot of people in this county that would like to have a tax exemption, okay? I feel like the recommendation of your council is, okay, they're not meeting the bar, so let's possibly lower the bar to make this thing work, all right? And.
I didn't understand that like that, is that what you?
Yeah, that's, that's not exactly right.
Okay, 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 well, let's, let's try to, to find common ground. I mean, how, how, you rephrase it then.
It's completely up to the county council how you want to, um, distribute or give this tax abatement. This abatement is supposed to be equally beneficial to the county as it is to the industry that's requesting the abatement. Uh, but in order for that to work and for both entities to benefit, there are certain requirements that they have to meet and have to become compliant on. They have not met those compliant requirements after three years. So therefore, uh, even though the Compliance Committee, uh, reviews it, it has no authority to adjust the abatement. Simply, the Abatement Review Committee is suggesting that the county council seek some advice to make that adjustment.
Come on.
That could be in the amount of years, I mean, there's all kinds of options, but, you know, that's all determined upon state statute.
I think at a minimum, it needs to be re, redone or evaluated. Now, if, if at the end of the day, that doesn't appear to be satisfactory, you could still say, we don't want to give it at all. I mean, that's an option. So you can modify it or you can not do it at all. Uh, I think you should at least take the first step.
Legal counsel.
Which is what they're recommending and see where that takes us. Um, because there still was a substantial investment made. I mean, I think it was a three million, what, there was a certain capital investment that was made in, in that.
Two million one or ten thousand?
Two million one hundred and ten for just capital investment that would have never occurred otherwise at that location. So there's still some value there that's a long-term commitment that was made.
But my thing is, can I, I mean, I'm, I'm just wondering, um, there are a lot of, of businesses in this county that are making capital investments in their own business that doesn't, that are not seeking tax abatement. Why, just because they're making an investment into their own business, how is that benefiting the county? I mean, does that benefit the county or is it just be, I mean, you know, I, of course, we're, we want to, you know, be, um, you know, bring in businesses and, um, that's helpful, but I think we need to look at how this is benefiting the county and not, you know, just, that's, that's my opinion.
So a simple way to gauge that benefit is to see if they're employing new people by increasing their workforce and see how much they're paying those individuals.
Right. And basically, we, um, I don't know, would our motion be on to, with what you've said, hiring outside council as to how we want to, that would be the first step, correct?
Well.
You, you need to, our suggestion is that you hire legal advice to look up state statute to see what your options are.
Right, and it could be, we don't know.
Right, the Compliance New Committee is not making any suggestions on how you can abate except for to go.
Well, that's what I would.
The main thing that I was interested in was to get people working. I had a question of them being able to get that many logs to take care of, and need enough help to do that to begin with, which I asked.
There's a lot of logs.
Yeah.
There are a lot of logs.
Yeah, but.
There's enough logs for.
It would take a lot of people, he's, uh, what was it, twenty-nine people they was gonna hire to begin with? That's the memory is all I'm going by.
Well, there's.
And they was gonna start.
Twenty-nine, that's correct.
Yeah, they started the, uh, they was gonna start the wages at, what was it?
Was it eighteen?
They had to, they had to meet, um, twenty-five dollars, which they didn't meet.
And that did not happen on a lot of them. I'd say that there was some of them that got paid more than that, but, and maybe they was averaging out. But I was under the assumption they was gonna work, pay the workhands help that much and that did not happen.
And it would be nice if they were here to represent themselves, so I can feel bad about that, but, pardon?
There's, there's one other, if I cut you off, go ahead.
Well, Nick raised and raised.
I, I, I guess, so we have non-compliance and your recommendation is, and, and whether it's the county's attorney or a, a retained attorney to look over this stuff, I assume that's going to be out of the county's pocket to make that happen.
Oh.
And therefore, the taxpayers are paying for this to happen.
County attorney would, I'm sorry.
What's that?
I thought our county attorney would.
It, it's still paid for no matter what.
Well, okay, yeah, but it's, it wouldn't be as much as.
Well, his rate is.
Okay.
How many employees do they have?
Ten.
So not.
We, we granted the abatement? It is our authority. I, I mean, they do not fulfill their agreement. Do we cut it back to a fifty percent?
That's.
Abatement this year? And that's, and, and it tells them that if they do not comply next year, they could lose it all. Now, I don't know if that's legal, but then again, unless somebody tells me it's illegal, um, I'd like to make a motion that due to their non-compliance, that we give them one more year to fifty percent, uh, abatements.
I feel like that's kind of what we already did personally.
Well, we didn't take anything.
We didn't say fifty percent, but we did say one more year. And if you weren't compliant. I, yeah, I mean.
But here's the thing, how many other people would like, like, yeah, as I said, how many other people would like to have these abatements and we've not given them?
Right, that's.
So I mean, there's somewhere you've got to draw the line or, or, or just pull the whole abatement away. Maybe it would be more legal to just say, okay, you didn't comply, you've lost your abatement.
But that's what we don't know, correct?
That's right. I would say is finding out what your state statutes options are and then choosing an option.
And that, and then.
Could you check on the, uh?
On the attorney before the commissioners, so whatever they, they'd like for me to, to do, I'll do it.
That's interesting. So, it would still be, we, I don't think we can do anything until we seek legal.
Well, we could, we could make a motion and, and carry it through based upon legal advice. And if they don't, if that's illegal, then we'd have to go back to drawing one, but.
I'll make a motion.
That's what I was saying. I already have.
I'll make a motion because we've already told them before, I'll make a motion that we counsel the abatement if it's legal.
If it's legal?
If it's legal.
Yeah, so point of order, Madam President, so there's, there's a motion that Nick had made. There's been no action on that, that needs to be resolved first.
Are you? So is there a second to that one?
So the motion you're making, Nick, is one more year, but at fifty percent?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So the county would get some revenue, uh, from this company and they would be on probation based on.
Does anybody know what the dollar figure tax, tax dollars we would be bringing in with all of it are fifty percent of? Is it ten thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars? Two thousand dollars?
Yeah, so there, there'd be no new money. What, what it would be is the assessed valuation that's taxable is what changes. So in the grand scheme of things, it would help to spread the tax liability a little more equally to everybody if you add more to the tax roll. But if you don't, then it'll stay abated and it'll not be taxed. So there's, but there's no new revenue, there's no new money to gain, uh, by, by reducing the abatement.
Madam Chair, I will draw my.
Okay. Has withdrawn his motion? No.
Okay, I'll make a motion that if it's illegal, we need to nullify his abatement, period. Because I think he's had ample time and I wasn't really in favor of it to begin with, but I was hoping that he could work that many people. But he hasn't did any of that and I don't think it helps the county as a whole that much. Uh, because there's a lot of people that's doing a lot more than that and don't have an abatement, so I.
Plus them not being here, excuse me. Uh, were there ten employees when, when they went out?
They had ten employees last year as well, when they came to the.
And, and they did have, okay. So we have a motion made by Earl, is there a second? A second. Seconded by Amy?
Uh, you know, I'm gonna go with Earl on this, but, but I, I would have liked to have had them there to, had them here to be able to answer some of these questions. But I think at some point, we're, we're gonna consider others tonight for this sort of thing and certainly it's a contract to me, you know, the council and, uh, and the individual companies to, to be able to fulfill these things.
And it's important enough to be present, right, you know?
I feel that he, uh, when we told him that he had one more year, I feel that he don't think that he'll get renewed any of.
Does anybody else?
I, yeah, I mean, I think that we should follow the recommendation of the, the committee and so I'm gonna vote no on this, but I do think that there needs to be some kind of adjustment made. Um, I don't think the abatement should continue as is because of the non-compliance issue, but I do think that there needs to be a legal review to come up with the best possible solution. And if at the end, that solution is not acceptable to a majority of the board, then you can still take it all away as this motion does. I just think we're taking two steps in this direction, maybe where we should be taking one, but that's just, that's just my opinion, so.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yeah, there is.
A second.
So if there's no other discussion, all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, motion carried.
And I, the reason I oppose was maybe we should have not tabled it, postponed it and got legal advice.
Well, there is, um.
That's okay.
There is a timeframe, I mean, March the fifteenth, is that correct?
May fifteenth.
May fifteenth, I mean, yeah, May fifteenth, sorry. I'm just kind of confused on that too.
I mean, so.
So, we're kind of, we're kind of need.
There isn't enough, there isn't a lot of time, unfortunately, but it is what it is.
Okay, Owen Valley Winery. Okay, I'd like to, me?
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
I'm here for questions, I think.
So, um, Owen Valley Winery approached, or Economic Development actually suggested to Owen Valley Winery that with their new manufacturing equipment, perhaps they could pursue a tax abatement with that equipment. So, uh, the E D C went ahead and sent out all of the paperwork to Tony twice and he did a very good job of filling all of that out, I appreciate that. Uh, you have a full packet of information sent to you and it is at this point that Uh, you have a full packet of information sent to you, and it is at this point that, uh, looking at that information, the county council needs to store the information to have been presented, and determine whether or not Owen Valley Winery should receive an abatement on their new manufacturing equipment.
How long have you got a scholarship?
Yeah, since twenty-eleven. Uh, you know, I will say when I filled the app out, I was really diligent of looking at the, uh, the amount of impact it would have on new hires, and, cause I, the whole reason for this modification to our current process is that we, it, it's a very continual process, so we, we're trying to automate, you know, the vineyard as well as the, the bottling side of the house. Uh, it's just very difficult to find employees the way I did. So, we're actually trying to, you know, say decrease the manual labor, but increase the, the detail of the type of person that you hire, so it's just not somebody pulling a cork handle down, but it's a very, much more scientific, much more, you know, detail-oriented, technical uh, job that's gonna be hired in to do this, so it's a much higher paying job. And, uh, cause I, you know, like the, the mill, I mean, there's, there's no way we could go, we, we got a job listing out there for three weeks, and nobody, nobody wants to work, it's just whatever it is.
I'd like to, I mean, maybe this, uh, is just allowing you to give us your, your sales pitch, but I mean, I know how I feel like the winery is beneficial to the county, bringing people in, but I'd like to hear, you know, you give your.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the winery is a hundred percent, I mean, it's, 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 it's tourism attraction, I mean, it really is, we bring people in from all over the Midwest, it's just something that we continue to grow. And, uh, as our volumes grow, as our vineyard grows, we're actually at the capacity right now with the hands on deck, and it's, it's, you know, we've got a good group of people, but there's only so much we can do, and only so far we can grow without mechanizing this thing. And, you know, and, you know, digging into the details of what we do as a winery different than other wineries, is we actually grow grapes, and we actually make wine. That's just it, a lot of them don't do that, we do that, a hundred percent. And to separate us from the crowd, we continue to do that, and when people visit us and they realize that, they come back. They join our wine club, they pay extra, we, we're not cheap, you can't, you, you know, to get drunk at Owen Valley Winery, you better couple some deep pockets, right? You're not gonna be slumming a couple of cheap beers when you come out, right? This is, this is a real deal. And people are figuring us out, and in the long run, it's gonna pay off, not just for us, but for the county. And as the county grows, the people that come here, they're, they're becoming our customers.
May I ask?
You bet.
On the investment you're, you're wanting in abatement, how much, what is the figure, dollar figure that you think would be saved?
Uh, saved? I have no, you know, it's, I'm like, I'm like Anton, it's, uh, it's time to write and have a file or first bill tangible property tax. It's like smoke and mirrors, right? And, and what is that actual savings? I'd love for somebody to show me how, what the actual savings is. It's, it's extremely complicated, and the nominal amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, I think that, that this is, it's a drop in a bucket, honestly. You know, I, I really believe that this process, and this with Marcy, and talking to several of you about this, it is very complicated, and I see the confusion on all your faces. This is a very, this is a very important thing for this county to have, but using it properly, and having circumstances where you can back it off, is ne- is necessary for us to grow this cap, bring manufacturing here. And the last thing you wanna do is defer it by a penalty that's gonna hurt these people. You know, I don't believe what, you know, Mater's done is is, 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 you know, purposeful, there's something that occurred, and it happens with most manufacturers or any business.
You're, you're, you've been here since eleven, you said?
Yeah, yeah.
So you're grounded. Uh, if you don't get an abatement, or you're gonna leave? I guess.
No, but you know what it will show me, is that the community believes in us, right? We've been out there in a bubble since we came here, we've not asked much for the county, we put our own money into the hat, and we, we grown, we fostered ourselves. But I look for the community leaders, and the EDC, I look for them to bless us. And the nominal amount that we're asking for here is essentially a nod and a blessing, right? We work our ass off out there. And in order for us to get a little blessing, I don't think it's much to ask.
I'm getting a devil's advocate, and I understand what you're saying.
Sure. Yeah.
But how many other businesses in Owen County are the same way?
If this was an easy process, more people would do it, and they would be held accountable for the process. But right now, it's not.
So, let me ask you a question. If a hundred people visit the winery, how many of those people are from out of county and bring their tax dollars here?
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent?
Uh, a- absolutely.
What kind of volume will you increase?
So, yeah, so, yeah, that's, that's a great question, so there's a couple of things that we're gonna, right now, we don't do wholesale. You don't see our bottles on the bottom shelves of every gas station in Guantanamo Bay, which is what I heard seen out there. Our wine club will continue to grow. Our wine club will do Indiana-produced wine grown here, and it will continue to grow very large. We see that's going on, there's several wineries in central Indiana that want us to make their wine for them, because their wine sucks, cause they're buying it from wherever. So, we're gonna start going down that path as well, and we already are for a couple of wineries, and they're wanting more volume. So we're gonna be able to do more of that. So not only are we gonna be able to move up our game here locally, cause we'll keep the best wine here, and we'll sell them the next better wine. But we're gonna increase the Indiana wine industry as well, right out of here, cause this bottling line we bought, that's the Swiss Army knife, I'll tell you what, it'll do everything.
How long is this abatement you're asking for?
I don't know, a hundred percent, it's whatever, you can do it for nine years or a year, I don't, I don't care.
The term of the abatement is based upon the score that the county council gives.
Long score? You lost me there.
I'm sorry, no, the term of the abatement is based upon the score that the county council gives when they store scores application. So, there's a certain amount of points that Owen Valley Winery can receive, the higher the points, the higher the long term of the abatement.
So we're working out a capital investment of two hundred and sixty-six thousand?
Yep.
Okay.
Thirty-five eighty-four cents.
And so the amount of years is based upon what the score, I don't know, Polly, I don't know that they ever give them a score on this thing.
There's a scoring system, uh, Nick, in the package.
Oh, okay, so is this something new?
No. And this.
We've done it with others.
I, this is the first abatement, I mean, that I've been part of, I mean, new ones. Um, how are the other ones, did the council score the, like Mater Mill and?
I don't know that, I don't know that I've ever done it.
Do, I mean, how about?
This is the same application that I have on file, they receive, there's twenty-seven points possible.
Right, but what I mean is, um, on the scoring process?
Mm-hmm.
On the prior, like, who's your energy and Mater Mill, did the council score them? That's my question.
The council is the entity that determines the abatement, I was not there for that, do not know either.
Cause I was not part of that. Does anybody, okay, Anton?
Well.
You were here.
So, the.
Look at confusion.
It was, I was understanding that the point system was done through, with a committee that reviewed it, through the chamber.
Through the many, through the chamber?
The same one that makes the, is that?
This is the application.
I mean, they follow that.
I follow the same application.
I mean, that, that part's static, but who does the scoring and the review, that's been done by the committee in the past. But the council could do it, but I'm not sure that's really the best practical approach for each, each of us to do that, I think we should have a committee do that.
I would like to see a committee of us, um, score it, um.
Right, yeah. That might be a better.
Because, you know, it will give us, uh, opportunity to go over and, you know, look at it, since we're the ones making the recog, I mean, making, not the recommendation, but making the decision.
Yeah.
I, I really hesitate to go off, no offense to the EDC.
No.
But, um, go off of what they're, you know, cause.
So who came up with the criteria?
We have, we have no authority to grant an abatement.
Right.
The county council grants county abatements, the town council grants town abatements. So, it would make sense that the county council would score to get an abatement.
Right. Right. And I, I agree with that, so I would like to see a committee, um, put together, um, and us go over this and score it.
So when is this gonna?
Now, I'm sure that we postpone this until we.
It's gonna be May fifteenth, I'm.
May fifteenth. Our, our next, um, our next.
I think it's the thirteenth.
It's the thirteenth, no, it's, our next is the eighth, so that's a week before.
Eight.
Or is it? Oh.
So, I mean, that would should give us plenty of time with.
Okay, it's close. But, so, they've had a chance to fill this out, and really, I mean, it's just connecting the dots from how much your investment is, okay, here's the scoring for that amount of investment, here's how much the wage is going to be, and you go over here and you say, okay, it's this, here's the amount of people. I mean, this, it's all right here in front of us, you know, but to delve deeper, I'm just curious where this was, who created, who created the criteria for this?
That's a very good question, this criteria has been in each application that each abatement has been given for Owen County, and this is the criteria that I have to give, I do not know where it came from.
So it was done many years ago, under previous leadership. There was a committee at the time that put together, uh, basically, a, a whole booklet or binder of these type of guidelines and regulations, and then the council eventually adopted that. But as far as updating that and making sure it's current, I'm sure there's some things that aren't really the way they should be. Right?
The scoring system as it is.
It may be a little bit.
Right.
What's the word I'm looking for?
Antiquated.
Antiquated, yes, there you go.
There were a lot of things that didn't apply.
Yeah, and, you know, there's some new things or new industries that probably weren't contemplated when that was put together.
And wasting majors based on tourism was not even a part of this, right?
That's a good point.
You know, out of state, out of county tax, or dollars are greener than the ones in, in county.
So I think we got two things going on here, one is, we have a request in front of us for a new abatement, something the council's really not done in years, okay?
Under pressure of timeline.
Yes, right, and we do have a deadline there, we do have the score sheet, we have what we have to work with, and we have to use that, to be honest, because that's all we have. The idea that Polly mentioned, I think that that's a, a very good idea, we should have, uh, some kind of a committee that gets into the meat of these requests in advance, and puts together its recommendation to the entire board for action at some point. The other part is the longer term, and that is an update to the whole thing. And that's something that's gonna take a lot more time, and something we can do later.
Yeah.
Right, but I think that there's two things going on here that I think need action. So, I would not be opposed to, if, if the eighth is not acceptable, we could have a separate meeting,
Right.
a special meeting, or if the eighth is acceptable, I think we should designate, make uh, three of us or whatever to meet, and we can, basically, I'm gonna use the word employ generically, but we can employ the help of Marcy, for instance, or, or a couple of business leaders or whatever, to get insight and go through that to then make a recommendation at our meeting on the eighth.
And it sounds like the, there might be legal advice that needs to be sought.
There could be.
We're already, she's, Marcy's already asked us to seek legal advice on, on majors. Uh, I mean, I, I've been here for twenty-nine years, and I, I have, I have no idea really how to handle this question this evening. You know, I think we sit here and just say, yeah, that sounds good, we'll give you an abatement, but really to know the legality's of it all, I, I don't know that we ever really sat down and had, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm confused.
I, I think, I mean, my idea of a good plan of action would be have the committee, you know, go through this, delve into it a little bit more, and whether have, um, whether a special meeting, or whether we, if we think it's, um, gonna give us enough time at the May eighth, then, um, so, that way.
Yeah.
You know, and, and in that process, if the committee just thinks that legal advice is needed, I don't, I, myself don't think this would be necessarily something that we would need legal advice on.
We have to work within the framework we have.
Right, right, right.
And so, from a legal advice standpoint, it, as Andy was alluding to, it is pretty straightforward, I think we need the time to do that, or the committee would need the time to do that.
Right.
And so, with that, well, let me ask you this. In the sake of time, why not give the chamber the authority to use their criteria against the winery and, and move forward, I mean, it's, it's really just, the data's here, the points are here, if we're going to use, if we've gotta use this, then
I didn't see that.
I, I don't understand what, what we're gonna use, yeah.
So, do you have health insurance for employees? I do not, no, that's dental and vision insurance, no, pipe insurance, that's our goal to grow, I'm gonna do that, absolutely.
All this stuff's right here, guys.
Yeah.
They just get all the scoring, this is how I.
Well, I'm gonna.
If, if I may, Andy, to that point, knowing that we had this criteria to work with,
You see what I mean?
Um, we did go ahead and take this before the abatement review committee.
Yeah.
Just for them to look over it. However, again, they are a committee that reviews compliance, that they did have a recommendation.
And what is their, their recommendation?
Since the review committee has thoroughly reviewed Owen Valley Winery's application for abatement, the abatement review committee finds that the current scoring system, the abatement request does not meet the minimum scoring required to receive the recommendation. This is Mr. Ryan, I can't fill the abatement review committee, so I just provide a copy of this resolution, probably under Owen County Audit Department, the local government finance, on this thirtieth day of March, in a vote of past five in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, so, with that in mind, I'm gonna make a recommendation that we
Making a motion?
Making a motion.
Making a motion, that, um, that we revisit this criteria, and, um, you know, but, and, and this has gotta be done by May fifteenth, or it doesn't happen till next year, correct?
If, if it doesn't happen before May fifteenth, it probably won't happen, cause, um,
We won't make.
Mr. Lederberg can't use his manufacturing equipment and receive an abatement, once he uses the equipment, the abatement's off the table.
At least by the rules that they're set in there currently.
And does the criteria need to be ran through legal?
Do we have to score?
It's probably something I need to talk with the LGF on.
So.
There's state statute for that.
Do we have to use this scoring, and are we bound to these criteria? Or can we make our own, I mean.
Well, I'm not legal, so, I, I'm simply using the criteria that we have to do.
So I, that's, to me, that's why I wanted, to me, that's why I wanted to have a committee, so we could look into something like this, this is going to be, I, I don't feel comfortable in, like I said, nothing against the EDC, but I don't feel comfortable in putting it all in your lap on being able to, I mean, if we are gonna be held accountable for this, I mean, I want us to, to make the right decisions. You know, so I, I would like to see the committee and, um,
At the moment, we have a motion just for the point of order, uh, I'm not su, can you restate that?
I'm gonna withdraw the motion.
Okay. So I'm gonna make a motion that we create a committee of three council members to meet on this specific request, work with the criteria that we only have to work with at the moment, and come up with a recommendation for our May eighth meeting.
Motion's been made by Anton, is there a second? I'll second it. Any other? Can you say that again? Sorry. The mic has drifted off.
So, so I'll restate the motion. It's to create a committee of three council members to consider this specific request, using the criteria that we have to work with at the moment, and making a recommendation for our May eighth meeting.
So, my question would be then, are we bound by any of the recommendations from your folks, okay? Then then I'll call for a vote.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Carrie.
So what was the final count?
Uh, two. Five, yeah. It's five to one.
Five to two.
I've learned a lot tonight.
She wants.
My friend's gonna explode. Two, oh, the three.
Regardless whether or not we get this, like, abatement or not, I am very interested in helping to make this work for our county, I think this is huge. It's a tool that can drive manufacturing in our county, we need that so bad, we need more investments. So you need my help in any way.
And I think a lot of this, like, criteria is antiquated, I mean, if it's been, you know, twenty, so. I mean, if it's been, you know, twenty, so.
It's been at least a decade, from what I understand.
It's great that we have that conversation.
Oh, I see, you were referring to three.
Guess I can give it a go.
You know, the only thing I was thinking about that, the only thing of it is, I'm not for serving on the alcohol board.
You know, I feel like I do. Officer about it, because Anton and I talked about it at one point. But you may be right.
Well, we need to check into that.
The only thing I would question whether or not you had to prove somebody else if you denied it. Right, if there was a conflict. So that would be my, gotta think.
I would, I would like to be there, but I got, thinking that we voted for that. I don't think there's legalets, you can do that. I was on the alcohol board at one time.
Steve, would you be interested in being part of the committee?
Yeah, that's fine. Do, do you want me to ask our liaison with the ATC? I could ask, I could put a conversation.
Yeah, yeah, check it out.
I will, I'll share.
Okay. I don't want you to get into saying, but I do appreciate you.
I feel like when we talked about it before, I asked our liaison with the ATC. And he said, I feel like he said.
So, Madam Mother, I do have a question for you before you go, Tony. So with the commitment of him to the alcohol board and being a business owner in Owen County, I mean, is there any, is it all good?
Unless there's something specific from the ABC Board guidelines, I'm not aware of anything. There's other departments that have people that own businesses that serve on their board that I'm aware of. So I don't see there.
I just wanna double time that, just for, you know, if there's an issue, we'll let you know. But you've been so busy.
Okay, I'll check what the ATC did.
So Polly was referring to the committee members and should we get a vote on that or do you, unless there's an objection, proceeds? Is everybody on the same page?
I just don't wanna hear about Tony providing wine at this event.
You won't hear about it. Go participate in it.
So Polly, for the record, did you wanna state who's on the committee?
Okay, at this point, unless we've got anybody opposed to it, it's myself and Anton and Steve.
I think that's a good group.
Do you need a motion?
I don't know, do you need a motion, Sheila?
Why don't you make one?
I'll make that one.
There you go.
I'll second that one.
All right, all those in favor?
Did that come over for DM, Anton?
Yeah.
We need an amendment for that.
Thank you so much, Tony.
If you Google the Indiana tax, if you Google the Indiana tax abatement, there's like four or five whole pages of easy to...
Okay, Marcy, you're on again.
Justin, if you're done with Marcy, I'm on the agenda one more time. I'll make this a lot quicker. I'm gonna stand, because I've been sitting a long time. All right, councilman, in December of 2022, the county commissioners as well as the state of Indiana approved our Owen County Comprehensive Plan. And so now Owen County has a comprehensive plan and that is wonderful. But that was a first step in a process that we still need to get across the finish line. That was step one of step two. And so I am here tonight to discuss with you step two. Step two is going ahead and looking at Owen County's current ordinances and policies, which are over 20 years old, which by the way, do have handwritten amendments in them and are typed on a typewriter. And I do think it is time, because of the growth that Owen County is having, that we update these ordinances and policies to protect the culture of Owen County as well as help local businesses in the growth that we've got coming our way. So to that point, the EDC has been looking for consulting firms who will take this on. Do you already have that? All right. Well, let me tell you, after the year and a half of the Comprehensive Plan, I reached out to multiple consulting firms to see if they would be interested in taking on the ordinances and policies. And I had several of them say, no, absolutely not. We do not want to do that right now because that Comprehensive Plan was a lean dinger. However, we kept hunting and we found GRW, the consulting firm that we have with us tonight, which I'll introduce in just a moment. Actually, I'm gonna introduce them now, if you wanna come on up. We have KK Fritz, who helped on the Owen County Comprehensive Plan and gave two workshops to our planning commission. And then we also have Deborah, who do you mind saying USA for me?
Lose ear, it looks like loser, but it's loser.
Lose ear. And she is with GRW Engineering, and they have put together a proposal that I have already taken to the redevelopment commission. And that proposal is for $88,750 and is over a nine to 12 month period to create and put together new ordinances and policies for Owen County. And there are multiple different steps in order to make that happen, to make sure that we have public input. It goes right through here and tells you exactly. Also, at the very end, we negotiated that they would also do a new zoning map for Owen County, which was not in the original proposal, but we have that now. So after taking that to RDC, the RDC went ahead and made a motion to approve $43,000 towards this to go ahead and put some skin in the game, because they felt that it was really important to go ahead and do this. And that way, it was a lot easier for me to come to the county council and make my request tonight. So my request to all of you this evening is for all of us to go ahead and cross the finish line for Owen County. And I request $45,750 to be allocated to complete this proposal and hire GRW to update our current ordinances and policies.
You say, Marcy, they're gonna put a zoning map together?
Yes.
Was that under the master plan, the Comprehensive Plan?
Well, that's something that is gonna parallel your ordinances and we would work with your planning department and your new WTH system to get you a GIS layer that's open to the public, that anybody can see that map online at any time and keeps everything pretty organized and straight for staff and employees.
The map that's in your Comprehensive Plan now is a policy that recommends what the future land use should be. A zoning map is actual local law that shows what the current zone is.
So you're finding to put a zoning map together that makes the wall that isn't overseen by the electric?
I think saying we're putting it together is not the right way to say.
Yeah, you already have laws. We're just gonna make it electronic, get it up to date.
The one we have, is it gonna be altered in any way?
Unless you choose to do that.
And who could we, we, I mean, okay.
If we get into the ordinances and maybe you find zoning districts that no longer suit your needs and you need to break them down into smaller pieces, if we need to look at densities, maybe add a new district, that's when that would come into play.
You know, I have to be honest, Marcy, I have no one in my district that is on board with this. So I will be against it tonight. I just wanna let you know that. Nothing between you and I, but I represent a constituency in my area and, I mean, you know, I can go on.
When I was at the planning meetings last year, there was a whole record that very specifically said, this is not about making laws and rules. This is about a plan for the future. That's exactly what it said. Now you're telling me that we're gonna use this ordinance that are this planning thing that we just got done with on December 2nd. We're gonna use it to now formulate the ordinances and laws. This is what everyone was against during all those meetings in here. And now we were gonna take this and start making rules and ordinances and laws. And nobody agreed with it. I don't know how it got through. No constituents, no people, that, no public agreed with it.
Well, I wouldn't say no, because we had a lot of the public input that did agree with it. And when I said, and when we went before you and said that what we were presenting to you in the Comprehensive Plan was not law, that was absolutely correct. The Comprehensive Plan is not law. It is simply a suggestion, not a suggestion. It is what the public came up with, that they felt would be a good suggestion for the planning commission as they look to the future, because the planning commission has to make decisions. And Owen County is growing. And unless the planning commission is equipped with the right tools to make the best decision possible, then they have to make decisions based upon the ordinances and policies that are in place. And so that means when new businesses come in, the decisions that they're making have to be based upon ordinances and policies that are dated 20 plus years ago.
And a lot of the community wants those. They don't want growth. Most of the people I know do not want growth. They want, they moved to Owen County to be in Owen County the way it is today, or the way it was 15 years ago.
I understand that. I very much understand that.
Everybody I know, that's what they want. Don't want more, we need more, you know, whatever.
However, I would tell the county council and everyone in this room, whether you want growth or not, and bear in mind, I'm from Owen County. I live here on the line. Whether you want it or not, it is coming. And I love the culture of Owen County. I love the fact that I can go down the road to my neighbor and they can help me when I've got a tree across the way and cut it through, okay? And everybody likes the remoteness. The whole point of this is to protect the culture because growth is coming, whether we want it or not. You can see that by the different businesses and industries and the multiple amount of people that are moving into Owen County. If we do not protect our culture with correct ordinances and policies, and I'm not talking like Monroe County, I'm just talking good some things and establishing them so that we can protect ourselves, I guarantee you, we will get taken advantage of because we already have. And that will continue to happen to people in Owen County.
And if there are areas in your county that you don't wanna see growth and don't wanna see get populated, that needs to be on your map and reflected in your ordinance.
Absolutely.
That those areas are protected.
That's right. If you don't want it, say it.
It's protecting farm ground, like which everybody says it's...
Yeah, remember, I'll go ahead.
I was just gonna ask Amy that, I mean, you're on the planning and zoning board. I mean, so, well, on your experience on this whole process?
I think that I'm in favor of having it because I look at it differently. I look at it as where they're gonna put the proposed dollar store in the middle of a field. I was one of two that voted no, because I don't see the purpose of it being there. So I feel like what we have done with the plan and adding specifics to it is gonna benefit us more. Now, it's just not, because...
I just have a question. How would, I mean, like, the new plan keep something like that from happening?
Because there's criteria that you have to follow. Infrastructure depends on what's already built around there. If you can't put certain things next to, you know, schools, churches, whatnot. But there's a whole list of things that you have to check off. So the way I understood when you started this was that the laws, this would just overlay on what we already have and the laws are already, they're already the laws. Is that not right? We're not making any new laws.
Right, there are already laws.
Okay, that's...
But let me tell you, from 20 years ago, we had a lot of new land uses. We didn't have 20 years ago.
Right.
We have a new, a lot of new technology that's used in development that we didn't use 20 years ago, as far as bed, rest, conferences, things like that, so...
And the thing is, right now with the property that they're proposing, this don't come close to, it's like a hundred and some acre farm. Well, the DG is just the beginning of what it could be, you know? I don't go along with that, but I'm glad that I have, that we have this so that if we, he can't just sell it and then just keep building and make it a... I think it's going to benefit the rural communities. I may be thinking all wrong, but I...
Our current ordinances and policies, again, have caused issues for Owen County like trash transfer stations and firing ranges. We do not have in place the correct ordinances and policies to protect us from those things. And that's cost the county lots of money to try and deal with. Where if we were to look at those again, we could see what could we do to make that better and protect it?
But we're also saying that this isn't a, something that creates ordinance and laws. This is something else. This is something to look at and identify different boundaries and...
That's right. This is, this is right. This we, thank you very much. What we're doing here is asking for some appropriations to bring in GRW to look at our ordinances and policies and suggest to everyone what improvements could be made to protect that culture.
And ultimately, they will be ran through words and ordinances that will be law. And that's what worries me, because your culture and my culture, even though we're a half hour apart, as the crow flies, are different. And so, you know, I agree with Mr. Correll because it's a, I mean, and you say it's coming no matter what. Yeah, I know things are coming, but what I'm saying is you're selling this as to protect our culture. Well, the things that, my values are different than everybody else in this room. And our culture is different. You come from a different lineage than I do and you were raised in a different environment than I am, you know? But, and I'm up on the high ground. Bottom line is, you know, I guess what I'm a little hesitant on is creating a, a map overlay for folks in the surrounding county who wanna to put their culture here to use to do it.
No, it be customized to what your county wants.
But who in my county wants?
It's whoever's on the steering committee and is participating in the process. And we use your new Comprehensive Plan as the guide for going into that process.
It's up to the Plan Commission to give a recommendation to the county commissioners. We write what we're told to write. We do research on examples, elements that you're talking about, concerned about. During the Comprehensive Plan process, I was asked about agricultural preservation. And one of my responses was, you guys only have one agricultural zoning district. And that's not how anybody else does it anymore. There's lots of different kinds of agriculture. Confined feeding is really different than somebody who's got chickens that they grow on the side. But you can't, it's hard to lump those all in the same thing.
And the steering committee...
Would that, I mean, so that brings up a whole new issue. So that brings up a whole new set of questions for me, because we farm. So would that, I mean, if you had like different agricultural zones, would that be telling that farm what they could and could not do with their farm?
This, I can use a model ordinance that Department of Ag from Indiana put together with Farm Bureau. Okay, that's where my model that I start with comes from, that shows all these different layers of possible agricultural uses. So that's a starting point. And yes, that is what zoning does. It tells you what you can do on your land and what you can't. You can't have a junkyard on your farm. That's part of what zoning is. And you have an ordinance in place. Now, you have a map in place now.
Yeah, but that's our trouble with, we got now, we don't have enough manpower to police what we've got.
Right.
Nor do, nor do I.
Because we do have some different things.
I mean, I'm showing you a lot of junkyards.
Well, Norm was wanting to speak, but you can go ahead if you have something to say.
Yes, I just wanted to make it known that they won't create the zoning map. They'll use the zoning maps that we have and digitize it so that it can be accessible easier. Any changes to the zoning map would have to be done through the whole public hearing process to be able to make that happen. No changes can happen without the public hearings, public input. And so each ordinance would be looked at individually to see if the county wants to do that or not. And so we'd go through that whole process. Also, our ordinances are from 2003. They are extremely outdated. We have a border zoning appeals appeal because a permit that was issued, a building permit for cell towers. Our zoning code says that you cannot build... Our zoning code says that you cannot build a cell tower more than a hundred ninety-nine feet. State statute since then says you cannot put a limit on it. So, you know, they wanna build one three hundred feet. There's nothing we can do about it. Our ordinance is wrong, but now we have a whole appeal going on because our ordinances are so old and outdated. Setbacks, the setbacks for cell towers were ridiculous, actually. Uh, nothing else came anywhere near it. Um, and you can't treat, the stat, state statute says you can't treat cell tower any different than you do other industries similar to it. They also require, uh, in our ordinance that you have a separate, um, engineer review of plans for the cell tower. There was no other requirement for that for any other business, any other industry, uh, in, in the county. So, and so there's a statute again, that, that the statute says that you can't treat them differently than, than everyone else. Means that we can't make that happen. So we're going against our own ordinances and getting appealed because of it. But we have to because state law threatens us. So it would be much better to get our ordinances in order so that they are legal. And again, they would, we change through the public process. So this, they don't change it. And just say, here, here's your new ordinance. So it goes through the process that any ordinance has to go through, uh, updated. Uh, but there's many that need to be updated. I said, they're twenty-one years old, but it's, it, it's so much of it's against state law. It's, it's very frustrating.
So in my, I mean, my, what I'm hearing is so they would be going through and seeing if, you know, the ordinance matches, you know, state requirements.
Yes, they're gonna, they're gonna look at our ordinances, look at the model ordinances that are consistent with state law and see which of ours are.
And I would tell you, I already did some of that during the comprehensive plan. Uh, Suzanne has seen what I came up. It's not good. Honestly, I'd just say that. I think you, have you seen it? I think.
Yes, I mean, this is just one example of the cell tower, how our ordinances are just, just out of date. They need to be updated. This is a way for these folks to get less ideas on how to update them. But then it'll still have to go through the public process to be updated.
And anytime there's conflict between state statute and what your ordinance does leaves you legally vulnerable. So if you say yes or no to the wrong thing, we wanna give you that confidence to say, yes, we have a current document, we're confident in what it says and everybody's on this.
Don't we have a cell tower issue going on right now too? Pardon? Don't we have a cell tower issue going on right, yeah?
Yeah. The building permit was issued, um, 'cause I reviewed it and what was outside is the state statute didn't allow us to do. We had to take that part out and used everything else that we had, had left, um, to use. And so now, yes, I'm in between attorneys on both sides. There are neighbors who don't want a cell tower out there and they're saying, well, you should enforce it more. And so it's like, well, you can't enforce it because it's against the law. So, we're, we're in a bad situation. And, uh, so this would really save the county, uh, a lot of potential litigation costs, if nothing else. But again, it's nothing, they only make recommendations. It has to go through the.
Just like the plan, just committee, the steering committee, I mean, I gosh, we spent forever on that.
If you say they only make recommendations, then who actually puts the law and the teeth into these ordinances?
The county commissioners.
Yes.
Some of the county commissioners.
And we're, and we're seeing communities now that have just been ran with trash and vehicles and junk. We have nobody do anything.
Enforcement is.
Enforcement, so is this gonna help enforcement? This gonna take your.
That was one of the things in the training session that I talked about with the plan commission and VCA and any of the elected officials who came was first, from getting going, I said, there's no point in doing a new comprehensive plan unless you're gonna sync your actual ordinances to it. Otherwise, it's just gonna sit there on the shelf. You can use it for grant application or something. But it's not really going to make a difference with things like enforcement.
I think they're working on that.
The other thing that we talked about is that if you adopt an ordinance, you have to be willing to enforce it. How you do that, what your system is and so forth, there are different models that we talked about. One of the things I threw out is some communities in Indiana, um, I think I mentioned Lebanon and Greenwood do some ticketing. Okay, so the first one's like a warning ticket. This junk car, you move it or you get a ticket, just like you would if you parked illegally or something like that. So there are different ways that you can do that. That's something we'll look at. There is an enforcement chapter that is part of this unified development ordinance. Now, on the other hand, I wanna say, Deb and I came early and talked to Suzanne and I have talked to Suzanne throughout the con-plan process too. We know how many people you have to do things right now. So we're not looking to develop something that you can't do. We do different levels for different communities based on what your capability is. We're not gonna give you something that South Bend could do, for example, or something like that. They're totally different community, different culture, different values, different abilities.
As far as the junk issue, we had recently a meeting where we brought together many stakeholders. We brought together the health department, the sheriff's department, uh, building department, um, if I can remember how many, for their, but we're looking into how to deal with the junk issue that, that the county has. And, uh, one of the things that, um, commissioners worked out is a waste away day. Where there's gonna be containers spread out in different parts of the county for people to take their junk. Give it, you know, here, it's a waste, you know, let's get rid of this stuff and get it out of, get it where it belongs. So, um, and, and then talking about how, uh, we can enforce it and we're gonna enforce it. Um, and, you know, depending on what the issue was, would, would there be actually two or three people going together, um, to interact with the inspection, interact with the, uh, property owner or occupant or whatever. So we, that is starting. Uh, we have another meeting in the.
But that's gonna go on regardless if we are these people or not. Madam Chair, I'd like to say, we have people out there that's different. They came to Owen County, as Andy said. It's a culture here, they buy here because they like space or whatever it may be, it's a little different lifestyle. And then we want, they need forty-three thousand dollars of the taxpayers' money to make this happen. It's almost a double-edged sword. You're telling the people in my area, I'm gonna vote for this and then I'm gonna vote to spend your forty-three thousand dollars. I, I, I can't, I can't support either one of those.
Well, if, if I may, my take on that is that, yes, we have a lot of people moving into, to the community. I still think this is gonna protect you because the people that move in that have not lived here, they're sixty-five years, they're gonna do whatever they can do with no laws and no enforcement.
I'm still trying to find, there's a, it was stated that this program does not tech, does not, law, is not an ordinance or whatever. I mean, this is, this is a overlay basically of, of different county areas.
Of what we can do.
Yeah, it's a process for us to look at the current ordinances and policies that we have and to, one, make sure they meet state statute.
Right.
We obviously know they do not and this is already causing taxpayer, uh, problems and all kinds of legal issues within the county and will continue to. And then the second part is to look at it with the comprehensive plan in place and see as we grow, are there some suggestions that can be made? They do not have to be made into law, but suggestions that can be made that in the future might set us up even better.
The other thing is an organizational thing, quite honestly. It's hard to enforce something if you can't figure out what the requirement is. And your ordinance is really difficult to try to piece together in any kind of logical way. So if you look at more modern ordinances that include better organization, tables instead of pages of typewritten text and stuff, it's easier for any, a lot of communities have these online. You can go online, see what your zoning is on the zoning map, check that zoning district that's in the zoning ordinance, find out what uses are and kind of be a step ahead of things. Realtors can do that kind of homework, et cetera. But organizing is also part of what we do, is trying to put all the stuff that goes together together instead of having it fifty pages apart in the bottom of a middle paragraph or something.
And if your staff and attorney are having problems navigating the ordinance, how do you expect your constituents and anybody marketing properties to understand what the document says? I mean, we were in today talking and we asked, what's your minimum home size?
Seven hundred.
Or is it?
Yeah.
Why would you have a minimum?
It's your home size.
Because you, there's a statute that says that you have a minimum house size. So currently, I sell permits for a, I cannot, I do not sell permits for anything less than seven hundred and twenty-five feet. But that is not what, that is in will.
Norm, it's part of the, it's part of the. I can't see you, Norm, I'm sorry.
Yes, I disagree with that. I know.
That's right, yeah.
But it is to keep a consistency.
Yeah, Norm.
If you don't keep a consistency, then you get everything under the sun, so.
Norm, Norm.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay. Couple of things. Number one, planning and zoning was here before we ever started the new plan, guys. And I live in your district, babe. What we have, and the, the tower is a prime example. No matter what decision we make, it's gonna be wrong and we're gonna get sued about one direction or the other, no matter which way we go. So our, our decision is, do we back our ordinances, let me know around David, and go around by the state, or do we back the state and the local folks, feel that we didn't back? That is my decision to X Thursday, next Tuesday, or Thursday. I mean, that's where we're at. Now, you can like, not like the man, I don't want anybody telling me I'm doing my property either. With that being said, if we don't have some control over it, then we'll get whatever we get. And then you're not gonna be happy about that either because then you get the feedlot next to your three hundred thousand dollar home. And during the planning process, and Polly can attest to this because she brought a group of people in here that were upset. We talked about it, we talked again and we brought people in and we brought people in and we kept having meetings until people just quit coming. So, we solicited information. We put it together based on who we could get in here to talk about it. And we made a lot of changes based on the local farmers and what they wanted. Great, I say, and I said it at a meeting, come on, tell me what you guys want. I'm not making the decision for all of us. We all need to make the decision for all of us. And that's what we think we've done with the comprehensive plan that we currently have. Now, we're at the point where we have to update the ordinances to follow suit because otherwise we find ourselves in these situations like Dana's dealing with and like I'm dealing with, where there's no answer for us. No matter what we do, we're gonna spend money fighting one lawyer or the other. And I'm just telling you because it's common, no matter what we do. We don't wanna be in that situation. And I didn't know about the overlay and I didn't know about this until I stopped in today and Susan told me about it. So, I knew we had missed a meeting about it with the commissioner, then I thought it was done until you come back to commissioner, so that's decided. The point is, Gary and I went out to a property out by us where there's trash in the creek that's been dumped there. Great, that is a violation. Okay, we send a letter. Ninety days later, we send another letter. Ninety days later, we send another letter. If you do the math, you're a year out now, it's still in there. It's gonna be in there because no one is on the books as who enforces it. That's what I would like to see and during our training session, I asked that very question. I wanted in there whose job it is to enforce it, no matter what it is, because I don't know.
So, with that, and, and that's, that's why I'm a little hesitant on things because the thing that I think we're really best at is we got enforcement issues and, uh, ordinance issues with the personnel policy, alright? We, we wanna go out, we, we buy timekeeping and stuff and, but yet, we don't update and enforce the rules that are in place. So just like this, you know, this is another grand tool and I, I think it's got merit. I mean, it, it, it does. You guys have done a terrific job. But, the teeth, the, the legal stuff, we don't, you know, worry about that. Just like we don't worry about the personnel policy and, 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 and stuff. And, but yet, we spend thousands and thousands of dollars on stuff, but as far as enforcement or ordinance, we, we, we just drag our feet. And, and, and to be honest with you, we're not the county executive. We don't, you know, do a lot of that. And so, I just, I just don't want to keep spending money towards stuff when the problem is we don't enforce and, and we don't update our own legal statutes.
I made a motion that we postpone this until, it's, it's forty-three thousand dollars. I have a comment on that. You came up, Marcy, with how much, forty-seven or eight thousand?
Actually, I didn't know, maybe Polly, you could speak 'cause the RDC gave the forty-three thousand dollars and Polly was part of that vote. Could you speak maybe to the county council, why you as well as the rest of the RDC chose to go ahead and give the forty-three thousand dollars?
Um, one thing is, I mean, that money was there. I, uh, I would have rather seen them, you know, fund the, the whole thing. My, my thing, and I have, I still have, the whole zoning thing still bothers me, especially when they talk about farmers, you know, uh, being told what they can and can't do. Um, but the thing, the reason I was on board for this is because of just what we're talking here about the ordinances maybe not being, or definitely are not in with state statutes. I think that's a very big concern of mine. 'Cause, I mean, apparently it's really already come and, you know, caused us many issues and I don't wanna see the taxpayers paying, uh, legal fees, uh, if it was something that we could be avoided. But that's, that's my big concern. Um, my, uh, the whole, and Norm pointed out that I did bring, you know, farmers in because they are concerned about, uh, I mean, when you were talking about confinement, I grew up and we had a partial hog confinement, um, facility. That was our bread and butter and got us through the eighties. And our family farm would have, um, not been around to have that knocked.
And so what we're talking about is allowing that and actually protecting that.
Okay.
So that you don't get like a subdivision built right next to you.
All right, see, that, that was, that was something that was, I mean, I think communication too is, is a, you know, some, because if you had laid that out, you know, when you were talking about that, I would've been, yeah, oh, I understand now.
Well, and then with the comprehensive plan, I mean, it took us a year and a half to have those types of talks and conversations. But I think we did prove and show the community that we were willing to listen and we took their information and absolutely the comprehensive plan reflects that.
So, that's.
There is a, there is a motion on that.
Oh, yes.
Then we just have to go to the second floor and I didn't have a motion.
And, uh, restate your motion, please.
Yeah, we, we postponed it. We postponed this, this request.
Can we say how long we're going to postpone it?
You are.
Can we say how long it will be postponed instead of kicking the can down the road for a month, a month, a month?
I could add time to that. We postponed for sixty days. Make a motion that we postpone this for sixty days.
Based on, I, I'd like to do some more research on it as well. I'll second that motion.
And in spirit of discussion, what information can we give to you to help support whichever decision you choose to consider?
I think, I think I would have to see the, the layout of the zoning. So I.
Okay, write this down. Now, this is, the last project we did together was for a small town that's very different from you, very different. It would not be the same requirements. It would not be the same with coordinates. But from an organizational standpoint of what the ordinance might look like, look at Pendleton, Indiana. And again, we know you are not Pendleton, Indiana, very different. But the organization of how things would be easier to find and so forth, these.
Just say on that sphere as me. Pendleton, Indiana.
And that's why I said, we know you're different. We're, we've been doing this a long time, and we've got the same color as yours.
Just like saying, I'd like to see is a guideline of enforcement. Why would these things, why spend eighty thousand dollars on a bunch of ordinances now that we've already got, ordinances that we're not enforcing? To say, well, we cleaned it all up, now we've got it going, and we're gonna enforce all this stuff? You know?
If I may though, that's actually why we need the money, to hire them to do exactly what you're wanting them to do. I don't think we can request of them to do their job without payment.
Yeah. Pendleton's, we're not gonna write a charter on enforcement for you before that.
Well, I mean, I.
You can look at the one that's in Pendleton, or you can look at other examples, but.
And you're probably not gonna get much support, we were definitely at that part.
And enforcement would not be you, right? I mean, you give us ideas, the one, okay, yeah.
No, I would, but.
All right, short, short.
Yeah, I'll keep it short. So, like I said, I asked her during the planning process, is it common for that information to be written into your ordinances? And the answer was yes, correct.
That's correct.
The only problem that we have is the infrastructure behind it to make it happen, which is what Nick's talking about. We don't have those bodies, whatever those bodies are. We either have to put names on the paper, or departments on the paper, to make it work, Nick, and that's, you're right on that. But, we need it written in there before we can even do that part. Now, I don't know which is the horse and which is the cart in this situation. All I can tell you is, it needs to happen. And I would invite everyone against to the meeting next week to see what it's gonna be like if we don't get some of this fixed.
It seems like this would have to be first, doesn't it, Norm? Because I was thinking the same thing, I mean.
Well, of course, with the.
Keep in mind.
Part of that.
Okay.
And they're also antiquated, they're also making this very difficult to, to see who's in charge or who's responsible it is. So, the enforcement ordinances need to be updated, which is part of it.
Exactly.
To be fair, he's asking for a sixty day delay, not to kill it.
Oh, I didn't think he was, I know what you.
With that, if we do the sixty day delay to ease everyone's mind, I mean, would that be a, go ahead.
Can we, can we have a minute?
Yeah, because I'm, I'm just, my concern was that you were afraid that they would not, I mean, take on the job if it was.
We've already been denied by several consulting firms, I just need to bear that in mind. And then, if, if you just hang with me one more, is it possible for Commissioner Burton to at least communicate? Because he also was on the RDC board, his thoughts on this as the commissioner?
I can't put any more into it than what Norm said, or anybody else said, I'm in favor of this. I don't want somebody to move in next door to me and start a landfill. And that's kind of where we're going with this, but we can't stop those if we don't have to take these ordinances. We're not changing any laws. We, if you all remember, we codified our ordinances back in twenty twenty, I believe it was. Four hundred of those, these zoning ordinances were part of that. And it needs to be corrected, and that's just by.
You guys can take your few minutes.
It's a good one.
Well.
Not sure I don't want to hear it, but.
I'm not sure sixty days is. Sixty days.
So why do so many others deny it?
Do what?
Because it's stupid, it's why the other, so many other companies deny it.
They, because we had such a pushback from the public for the comprehensive plan they did, and we thought that's, is what Marcy told me.
Our whole thing is, once we get this budget raised, once we get this money away, we're done. We have no say, so it goes to the building planning commission, to the commissioners, we, we're done.
There's a lot to say, but I kept my mouth shut, I do wanna comment.
I'm just, I'm torn, because I know what they're saying.
They're bad.
So, just so the county council knows, this is not something that I put together in the last month, even though it's just April. I've been working on this since the comprehensive plan was passed in December. That means we are four months that I've had these ladies in GRW in a holding pattern. And after we have communicated, if we cannot come up with the funds now, then unfortunately, they have other people waiting. And you will be, I don't know what else to do.
All right, well, I'm gonna tell you this, Marcy. This elected body here, I've not heard, or had a presentation before tonight on this, alright? So I'm gonna tell you right now, we're here to make the best decision with the best information we got. Now, he made a motion to give us sixty days to, you know, gather information, maybe visit the meeting as Norm, you know, suggested. And also, talk to the public about this. But, what I'm not gonna hear about is being stiff-armed some way of, we're walking if you don't do it our way tonight.
I'm not stiff-arming you, I'm telling you the timeline.
What I'm trying to say is, I have people, other communities who said, please do this work for us. And I've said, I have to wait, because somebody's in line before you. But I'm not sure if it's fair to your other communities in the state to keep putting them off. I don't, sixty days is another, you know, amount of time. And I'm sorry, Deb is more patient than me, and I've had people that I am current repeat clients, that I'm putting off for this. So.
Uh, can I, question? Is, if you did presentation, would it be that much different than the one you already have done for us?
If I did.
If you did a presentation, would it be that much different than the one you already have done?
Well, I guess part of my question is, did you not go to any of the plan commission meetings or trainings or anything? Some of you did, I know, I recognize some faces, but that's what we were doing, is talking about these steps. And what it did, and what the good steps were.
And there's language in your current ordinances that would not allow what your comprehensive plan is contemplating. It wouldn't let it happen.
Anton, you said you had some things to.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of this motion, I think it does require action sooner rather than later. Here's the reasons why. First of all, we already have an ordinance system on the books, okay? We already have planning and zoning. We already have zoning maps, we already have that stuff. This is not something new that we're just putting down on everybody, okay? That's the first point. The second is, is it's twenty years old. What other thing, and don't bring up abatements, that needs to be updated, we figured that out earlier today. But, think about things like the abatement policy that's dated, and we need to make a commitment to update that. Think about our wages and salary structure, and we need a commitment to update that. The personnel manual, all, these are things that have to be kept up to date. This is no different, and it's quite frankly, much more consequential when you think about investments in the community. You think about banking, real estate, protection of property owner rights that are, that people wanna preserve their properties the way they are. All of that is tied into this. And the other part that concerns me is, we've had more legal disputes and legal costs that we've used taxpayer money for to fund, because of the fact that our current ordinances are out of date. So we are bleeding money already. So to say that, well, we're gonna spend, you know, I'm a little hesitant on spending forty-four thousand, to me, that's a bargain. Because we've paid more than forty-four thousand in legal expenses for the last several years to try to work with, try to clean things up that are difficult to even clean up. So, in my opinion, I think that we should take action to make the investment and let them help us update the ordinances. Now, I'll also say that the final decisions on these are not, and Dana took the words out of my mouth earlier, that they are not the authority that makes the ordinances or passes them. The commissioners do that. The plan commission reviews those things. They have a process, a public notice. This isn't something that's just, this is the way it's gonna be, and here you go, you voted for it, and this is what you're gonna get. That is totally not what this is. They will use their expertise, they're gonna take the input that's solicited from the public and our other officials to put together an initial recommendation for the commissioners to consider adopting. They may not even like the first draft. They may come back, I would hope, and say, this wasn't addressed, this is not in here, this is too strong, this is too weak. That's a part of the process, as Marcy was pointing out. So, there's plenty of opportunities, plenty of layers, lots of oversight, plenty of opportunities for public opinion to develop a final structure or update that the commissioners would then decide on. But you've gotta make the investment first to seek the help. We need professional help and able to do that. We can't, we're not experts in this area. So, I think that we do need to make the investment. And I don't think a delay is a very wise idea, because we already have things that are happening in the county that are costing other property owners their values to their properties, and putting their investments at risk. Costing us a lot of legal fees, like I mentioned. This has got to be cleaned up, and it's fairly urgent, to be honest. So, I'm not in favor of the motion on that.
So, there's a.
Madam Sheriff, call her.
So, there's, okay, say it one more time, and here.
We postponed for sixty days.
Okay, and the motion was seconded by Andy?
Yep.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Get that.
Three in favor. Three in favor, four against.
Okay. So that, so now we need to make.
I'm gonna make a motion that we proceed with advertisement from the Lit Edit Fund for the amount of forty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to cover the cost of the project.
I'll second.
That's made by Anton, the ticket from Lit Edit, seconded by Amy. Any other questions on that?
Now, I will say this, I remember when there were initial very rough estimates on cost for this project. I heard upwards of two hundred grand, if I'm not mistaken, right, Commissioner Burton?
Yep.
The fact that the redevelopment commission is ponying up, first of all, the fact that the project's only eighty-nine thousand, that's actually pretty good. The fact that the redevelopment commission is using their existing funds to cover half the cost is even better. We're in a position to spend a quarter of the amount of money that probably would accost us, otherwise, to update something that hasn't been done in twenty years. If you do the math over twenty years, that's not a lot of money, to be honest. So, Lit Edit money is good money to use for this type of project, it's one time, it's not an annual expense. And I think that we should proceed with that.
So, I just wanna say one more thing, because I wanna, for my own clarification. I mean, your main process that you would be doing is making sure that the, that it is according to state statute and updating that. I mean, that's your main.
That's, yeah.
Primarily, yes. So, they're not, they're not making any new zoning, you know, and all of that. This is just to make sure that the, everything is.
We're gonna look at the recommendations in the conference of plan, we're gonna listen to the steering committee, and we're going to look for conflicts with state law, with federal law, with case law, which there are some, not just state.
But.
And we're gonna add some new land notices in that you guys don't even address right now. So somebody comes in to Suzanne's office, and she has no idea where this use is supposed to go, or the standards will be.
But it is, I mean, you're just recommending, and then that would go to.
That is correct.
Right, discretion.
Because we're, we're, are, we do what you tell us to do.
And we make it legal in the tax, to do what you want to do.
We have no interest in writing something that doesn't work for you, because that doesn't make us look good, right?
Okay.
It's no difference in the tax abatement review recommendation, you can take your leave.
Yeah, I kinda liken it to like an electrical panel. You've got kind of the panel, and it's empty, but what kind of circuits you put in there, what kind of amperages you put in there, that's up to us to decide. That's a local decision that the commissioners would ultimately make decisions on, based on what's needed, what the most important things are. And there's a process for that, and that's something that has to be followed. That includes multiple layers of public comment and input. So, you know, that's definitely a potential, depending on how much we need, you know?
One last question on the cell tower issue. If our ordinance was determined to be against state law, which it is, that wipes out the setback. Luckily, on this tower, the setback we're using is greater than the fall zone of the tower. It wouldn't have to be. If our ordinance was found to be invalid, they could put the cell tower up against a property line and let it fall in their neighborhood. So, luckily, in this situation, that's not gonna happen, but it could, which is scary.
Okay, so all those in favor of taking it out of Lit Edit? All those opposed? Well, thank you. It's hot. Okay, holiday pay review, Sheila, did we say we were?
Toshida contract.
We decided to.
Toshida, they're gonna pay for out of the incentive fund. So there isn't any direction needed from the council, so that is pulled, and Commissioner Burton will sign the contract, because it was initially approved in their meeting last week pending funding. Then, the holiday pay, again, there's been conversation back and forth, really for about a year now, on pay it every two weeks when it's due, not by the quarter. There's, we don't know where it started, we don't know why the policy was changed. It's making it more difficult to go back and pay employees from back, you know, some of them aren't even here when that quarter ends, and those kinds of things. So trying to figure it has been a little challenging. If it's just turned in every two weeks, just like everybody or most of them get it, I believe.
Is there a cost to doing it one way or the other?
No.
Then, can we do what's best for the auditor's office?
Let me get.
Kathleen, do you, again, the issues just kinda keep coming back and forth with different things, and it's easier for the auditor's office, but there are policies out there that I guess would have to be rescinded or.
Well, and I sent an email on this this morning, I'm suspecting that it was just a convenience thing to do it quarterly from the auditor's standpoint. But if it's more accurate or better from an operational standpoint at the departmental level to do it when it happens, you know, if you, in this pay period, had a holiday fall there, then pay it out, is what you're saying.
Is what I'd like to do, because currently, the way the policy states is every quarter, an employee that earns holiday that is listed within that specific department list gets paid twenty-four hours every quarter. Well, if you look at this quarter that we just had, from January to March, there were only two holidays. So that means we're advancing a holiday from somewhere more than likely Thanksgiving or Christmas, where we're expecting to pay somebody nine months in advance for them to possibly not be here in December.
Plus, in the reverse, the new person would maybe be getting three holidays, but they only really worked during a period that had one.
Right, but, so I keep track of it a little bit differently than the way the policy states it. So, it's just so much easier to pay it in the pay period that the holiday falls on. So then that way, we're not advancing money, we're not paying people half quarters, all of that kinda stuff to get their pay.
Is that okay with you all?
Absolutely.
It's not moving.
Yeah, so, I'll.
You want to second?
Make a motion that we, oh, or are you making the motion?
That's one.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Andy, seconded by Anton, any questions?
So we're gonna change it from.
Who's gonna update the policy? Because I don't want it to then get, well, the dispatch center pays it this way, but the sheriff's department doesn't pay it that way. They still pay it the old way, because that's kinda what got us in a bind the last year and a half, so.
We're gonna.
And I go share the same here now, so that only would happen, however.
Yeah, yeah.
If it gets voted, the paperwork.
You wanna see it in writing. You wanna see it in writing?
And I'm happy to change that right on the first round.
So we, we, I think as a part of the motion and the action, it's gonna require the actual wording to be adopted in next meeting. But I think we need to proceed with making the change, so. Yep.
Then we did a vote on that request.
We need a vote. So we're changing it from quarterly blocks payout to when, per pay period, when the holiday falls.
That makes sense, yes. So, all right, ready? All those in favor? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that Amy and Burrow stand up and tell what's so funny.
No, you're not seconded.
I was talking to, kinda request a five-minute recess.
Almost.
All right, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a reg, uh, motion that we allow the president to sign the salary ordinance confirmation cover as presented.
Okay. Motion made, seconded. All those in favor? Okay. All right, we have one more that we're adding in the corner. It's-
Madam Sheriff, I know her request and that's just not a problem. But I know we have young lady here.
Okay.
It's okay, can you wait a break? It's okay, we can wait. Okay? Yes, it is okay. Thank you. We'll just hang out right here, wait for it, Amy. Darn it home, extra large diet.
All right.
Somebody has cornered upstairs.
And you need more than five minutes, I'm sure.
Amy, are you okay? Is it okay if I hand out the paper?
Yes, because I'm new.
All right, okay.
There were like two of them.
Yeah, you don't wanna have any medical emergencies. So we are taking it.
How are you allowed to take?
So. Joel, hold that thought. We're making up for our short meetings that we had the last couple times.
Appropriation to reimburse that. It would still go through the additional appropriation, but she could have a check in the morning. If not, she can't do anything until the meeting on the 19th and, and-
Let me second you, she'll back up in just a minute because I, um, on the, just what you just said. I'm sorry.
Okay. No guarantee that they're gonna hold it till the 19th. If they do, the commissioners would have to approve at their meeting. It could come out of the other funds, they control those. So it could be approved on the 19th, check written the same day. You have contract money in their line item, in a current line item in, in one of their funds that could possibly be used as well as the council has one. The commissioners would have to vote on their contract line item. You guys could vote on your contract line item. And you do have money sitting in a fund. You can still do an additional appropriation to reimburse those funds. But in an effort to try and get the van, it would be better to, to use something current.
If we use that contract line item, I mean, we would, we would get reimbursed for that then or?
You would have to apply for an additional appropriation for the reimbursement for a vehicle that would replenish the council fund in that specific line item. Same as if the commissioners were to use theirs for the ARPA fund.
Couple recommendations. I have no problem using the ARPA funds. We've committed 18,000 to the sheriff's department for the canines. It's not been voted on by you folks yet. It was, so done in a commissioner meeting for the ARPA funds, which leaves $32,000. With Joel here, I'm sure he supports that. Another option is we have unrestricted funds in the opioid settlement, Sheila, that are about $40,000. That money can be used as well because it is unrestricted. That would be my recommendation at this time to make it happen as fast as possible. She's gonna need an out-of-cycle plane for tomorrow to make this happen.
I think it's a good price. Yeah, we wanna jump on it.
Yes, and this particular dealership will provide us with the cot locks and so on. They, they can handle all that.
It's a nice, yeah.
So that's just my recommendation and it's entirely up to you folks.
So I make a motion that we temporarily go ahead and authorize the use of our contract line item so that we can back the financial part to this and get it, get it committed, okay? And then in, but in the longer term or the regular steps, we wanna use the ARPA fund, subject to commissioner acceptance and approval, to finalize and repay back when that all settles.
So what will happen tomorrow? Like I enter into an agreement with the dealership or how does that work?
Do, if it passes, whatever's needed to be done.
Joel, Joel can make the call. I can make the call. We'll come in and sign off on the check and you can go down there. Drive you down there, whatever we need to do and get it picked up.
So-
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made by Anton, seconded by Andy. Do you guys have any questions on this?
I think it's a good deal.
I actually have one additional question. Is it something that we would wanna put on a rotation?
Be quiet, there are-
Yeah, let's, we'll, we'll wait just a minute. All right.
Yeah.
So all those in favor? All those opposed?
I think budget time is the time to discuss rotations.
Right, this one's a blast for wild, so.
Yeah, there's a, we can always talk about that. The trouble is, is only one vehicle, one department. There's not a lot juggling around and we can't budget. You know, you wouldn't budget that amount each year, obviously, partially.
It's not like, you know, the, the sheriff's department, which is-
It's not a cumulative fund.
You might drive it 20,000 miles, you might not drive 20,000 miles in three years, you know?
I just wanna, I wanna make sure that the person who precedes me is not gonna get stuck with a 17-year-old vehicle.
Yeah, I don't, you'd have to have a commitment to manage that, but yeah.
We're in a little bit of financial situation, we don't have time to buy that.
Thank goodness, thank you all.
I'm still thinking Ford Windstar, I mean.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sheila will need to claim, we'll have to copy that invoice first thing in the morning. And then Joel and I can come in and sign off. Here you go.
All right, I'll be there, thank you.
All right, like the pickle in the department head comments, everyone?
Trying to make sure. So it was brought to my attention last week that we have not been paying my matron properly. I'm gonna give you a Indiana code that requires that the matron is paid the same rate as the deputies. It is the law. She started in October, I believe it was the 18th of 2021, sorry. 2021 and she was, she was not at the deputy's pay at that time. So you have IC 36, 810, 5. And you can read for yourself, but basically says that the matron and assistants are members of the county police department, which are the same powers, duties and salary as the other members of the department, the same rank, grade, position. I have talked to several sheriffs throughout the state in the past week. I've also talked to my attorney, Craig McKee, which this is his email, if I can provide to you. And it says, and he's saying the same thing. I also called the ISA, Indiana Sheriff's Association, and I asked them, is the major required to be paid the same as the deputies? And they said, yes, by law, she must be paid the same.
What's the disparity, Ryan?
She is at 1970 and she should be making right now 25, 45. Also, this is a court case.
You can pass around.
This is Gibson versus, Gibson County versus the state of Indiana. They were in the same, similar situation. And a lawsuit was filed and it went to the court of appeals. The court of appeals upheld the matron. and it went to the Court of Appeals, and the Court of Appeals upheld that the matron was not paid the same.
So I've got a question for you, sir.
Yep.
And, and maybe even Sheila. Is two thousand seventeen, which is the date on this, the code, what I'm asking is, is this, how does this open up us up retroactively? So are we talking this year? How, how long are you talking?
Well, she's only been hired since twenty twenty-one. So really, right now, it's not that bad. There was a court case that, that allows people to go back twenty years if they were not paid appropriately under this statute. So taking care of it now is kind of a crucial question.
I would recommend we take it under advisement. I think we already had committed internally to review it with legal because not all of the statute really applies exactly the way some people interpret it. So there's gonna be some legal dispute here. Not all counties are in the same position. Not all positions are the same. Our consultant had already reviewed this a few years ago and was aware of this, but it didn't apply at the time. So I think there needs to be some research here first before a final decision is made. Plus, it's a personnel issue. I don't wanna discredit the individual or bring them into a public discussion about their position. So I think the council should probably take this under legal advisement. That'd be my recommendation. Do you, you feel that would be a fair?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Right. I just don't want us in a position where we're.
We don't want you in trouble.
I wanna make sure she's paying what she's supposed to be paying because I don't wanna.
If there is a legal obligation, we'll do it. But we need to make sure that that is, in fact, what we're talking about. Because there is, this has been discussed statewide, and there's been different situations in different counties. There's been no universal application of this scenario.
So one thing that in, in the law that it does specify that may help clarify is if you look at a couple different statutes. One is the thirty-six, eight, ten, five, saying the prison matron and assistant matrons are members of the department, have the powers, duties, and members of the department, and are entitled to the same salary that other members of the department with the same rank, grade, position are paid. So it does specify, and then it goes into what a member of a department is in a different statute, she also applies. So yes, you might wanna have your legal advisor take a look at it, but.
Anton, you bring up a good question. I think, who's our legal advisor?
I didn't get into that.
I wanna tell you, based on some comments that were made tonight, I think we need to establish something there.
We have a retainer or somebody, a retainer for questions that, in terms of legal issues, yes.
Okay, so here's the deal. I think we need to set, okay, so Ryan's gonna go back, and he's gotta answer to employees, he's gotta answer to folks. So let's, let's, let's put something together that sets a timeline for us to establish right around here and get this thing going, so.
Do we wanna make a motion tonight to give?
Well, I thought you started to. You made a recommendation.
Yeah, I'm thinking we should give it thorough review.
So.
So I'll make a motion that we give it a review, take what the sheriff presented under advisement that may require us to employ legal counsel and/or professional assistance in this area to give it a proper review.
I can tell you that Tanya Bond is the attorney for the ISA. She would be in favor of the sheriffs, not the matrons. She does not apply to the matrons. She represents only sheriffs. And she's the one that is the guru in the law when it comes to matrons and whatnot. Just, just FYI, which isn't in favor for me. Her decision that if the patron or the major needs paid more does not benefit me whatsoever.
No, but by law, if she's entitled, we sure wanna get her to.
Yes, because I don't want to.
Yes, I mean.
Yeah, so that was my motion.
What was it, Anton?
It was to take the sheriff's information under advisement, give it proper review by employing legal counsel or professional advice where needed, and coming up with the appropriate solution for our next meeting.
Well, the thing of it is, the chairman is the one that would have to do the footwork. So are we gonna alter, right, to, to hire a, hire some legal counsel?
Sounds good.
I'm going to make a motion that, well, are you gonna accept that as a friendly amendment?
Yeah, I'll take that.
Are you going to second that?
I, well, I'm sorry.
Okay, he accepted a friendly amendment to authorize the employment of legal counsel.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Then you have a second. I'll call for a vote.
So all those in favor? Motion carried.
Okay.
Keep in mind too that her hire date was the eighteenth of October, twenty twenty-one. Rates occurred on October the seventh of twenty twenty-two, so there would be two different rates there.
Yeah. Once we establish this, I think we'll.
Dig into it, yeah.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan.
Appreciate it.
So.
I think we're, I mean, we're getting to the question. We have nobody who represents.
That was very apparent tonight.
Anyway, I agree with Ryan. In the Indiana state code, we need to hire somebody as a counsel. We have a lawyer.
I appreciate the amendment.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, yes.
So, um, I would like to open a can of worms. It's been a long since I've seen you, so why not? So I emailed you all. It's been a while now, and it is reference to the comp time policy. I am a believer in the comp time policy. I'm the first department that had an eighty-hour cap on their comp time policy way back when I first came in. However, I have a, not a unique situation because it could happen to any department. We do not have a maternity leave policy for the county. I have an employee that was hired at the beginning of December. She is due in August. So she has not started to receive large lump sums of time or to be able to take time off. What I am asking is to allow her to go over that eighty-hour cap of comp time, two hundred and forty-six weeks for a typical maternity leave is six weeks pending no complications, for her not to exceed that amount in her comp time. Because I really fear that if she is not, if she's gonna be gone for six weeks on maternity leave, I have a feeling I might end up losing an employee that we've already invested this much time into. Just because she's not gonna be getting a paycheck, she's gonna have to be paying the county out of her personal check for her insurance and those type of things to continue to employ with Owen County. If for any reason during this time, see what I said, a can of worms? At any time, you were like.
Why do you do this?
I thought she'd forgotten about us.
I, I, I'm glad you brought this up because this is why, guys, we got to have some kind of legal because we're not getting things updated. We're not getting policy. And whenever it comes to money and benefits, you know, it, we've got to keep pace here, and things just aren't getting done.
So my thing is, is if you approve her to, for me to not allow her comp time to go more than two hundred and forty hours, if she has the baby, she decides she's gonna be a stay-at-home mom, whatever the situation is, or she can't come back to work, I have the funds to be able to pay her out those two hundred and forty hours because I'm down in, I've been down one employee the entire year, and I also have another employee that's on the military leave clear until at least October that we also are not paying those wages either. So.
So my opinion is that I think that, you know, we need to look at this. As far as the hour threshold and stuff, I'd like to look at, you know, what some other folks are doing and seeing what is common practice.
And you know, Andy, could be a federal thing attached to this, depending on the opportunity for a person to take a leave of absence.
Well, I know it falls under FMLA. Maternity leave falls under FMLA. I don't know about, because you have to have the, you can receive FMLA up to twelve weeks, sixteen, twenty-six weeks, something out of the year. However, to get paid, you have to have the time on books to be able to get paid. FMLA's not paying you. I just want to, because I know she's gonna be on FMLA. I'm gonna have to keep her job. I just, I, as a person, as a boss, want to be able to allow her to exceed that comp time threshold so she can still get paid, so I have the opportunity to try to still retain an employee.
And, and, and you're very true about opening up a can of worms.
Yeah, because I know every other department is gonna come for, every other different situation.
You know, right now.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna move that we take the matter under advisement and regroup on this at our May meeting.
So. Is there any way that you could do the, like you said, if she decided that she wanted to be a stay-at-home mom, that she didn't get that money until she?
Legally, no, because she, because that is time that she earned that is owed back to her. So that's, that's.
But it's also. Well, no, the comp, the, but I'm talking about her maternity.
But you're paying it up until she ran out anyway. If she comes back and comes back and doesn't come back.
But she won't have enough time to pay because she's already like seven eight point two hours.
Wonder, wonder, uh.
How many hours are?
Time for the month.
So she, so she is currently an employee that is accruing six hours every month. So she won't get her hundred and fifteen-hour lump sum until December. But how many months are until now, until August? I have not done that math yet, and I can't sit and stand here and do that in my head at this moment without a piece of paper because it is late and I am exhausted.
Madam Chair, Mr. Andy made the motion. I second it.
Okay. So can I restate one?
Take it under advisement. We need to look at the federal guidance and what those hours are. Also, what, you know, we can research the other, what other folks are doing, and come back and revisit the next one.
All right. Well, it was made by Andy, seconded by Nick. All those in favor?
I will try to be at the May meeting. I can't guarantee I will be, but I will have numbers and stuff to Sheila to be able to speak for me if I can't.
Okay.
Maternity is a totally different, it's an entity on its own, isn't it, for every camera?
Because I have kind of looked into it.
Currently.
Currently, and it just depends.
Thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents a month.
Yes.
How much?
Thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents a month for, for the attorney.
That it's not our attorney, but the prior attorney was.
Sixty years. He was, he worked for everybody.
He is making the same amount of money as Jim. Yes, he is. And Jim was the county attorney. Just told us today that he was the commissioner.
Where did those funds come from? Sheila, thirteen thousand.
Yeah, that's when I was.
It's in the commissioner's budget.
I felt like an idiot.
It went from a hundred and sixty thousand to.
Well, it was.
It was increased to add forty thousand for outside additional. So really, there's two hundred thousand in that line item because they were adding additional for the planning and zoning and using a couple other attorney companies to represent that part of it, not him.
I, I, I wanna make a motion that we review the legal line item at the May meeting.
Okay, say that again.
Make a motion that we review the legal line item at our May meeting.
Motion made by Andy. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Steve. All those in favor? Motion carried.
And I may or may not see you at that meeting. I'm going, I'm.
Well, you take care of yourself.
Make a motion, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm still setting.
Well, yeah, sorry. Department head.
He's waited.
Yes.
I wasn't on your agenda exactly. I was, I wasn't.
Oh, God.
Christine asked me to do a, I mean, she had a previous engagement, I swear to God. Just listen to me really quick. I'll be fast. We'll be there. So I, I have no idea how to do this, so I'm gonna do accordingly. I'll just pack this to you guys here.
Three hundred and, okay.
So basically what we're, we're asking for, an additional appropriation request, which we're not asking for any money from the council. Our board, after some review of some things that we've got going on at the health departments, we've got that we have coming up at the health department, I believe. We need to get, we get one place. One of the things that we have now is our purchase, we purchased a trailer for the health department for emergency situations that come up such as like COVID and the things that we've been involved in and that and other. I personally pulled that view, that trailer myself with my personal vehicle. Some damage occurred, and not only am I out because of that, obviously, there's no way to repay me with my insurance company, and the discussion wasn't real happy to know that I have a stolen account vehicle with my personal vehicle. Some of the things that we use the vehicle for is the student liaison program that the girls are doing every week. They're going to the different schools. The girls do the food preparation stuff where they go to all the different restaurants and things like that, the schools, businesses, and things checking food. Christine and I both have meetings all of the time somewhere. We at one time, even with COVID in place, did mileage calculation, and we're paying out a significant amount of mileage that would be less than it would cost us to purchase a vehicle. We have a little bit of the same situation going on that Shelby did as far as the quote that we have and the timeframe to getting the vehicle. Again, in case I didn't mention, I apologize. Like I said, I'm a little bit nervous never doing this before. Our health board had already looked at the situation, the financial ability and everything else, and they voted to approve us to come and request a move. Funds, any additional appropriation from the Food Health Fund just over to a, what do I call it, Sheila?
To a line item.
To a line item to make a purchase on the vehicle. So that's what we're looking to do. I, I'm sorry, guys, if I can't answer any questions. I'll do the best I can.
Your funds are already there. You've already got the money.
Our funds are already there, yes. We don't, I, in the nicest way I can put it, we just need your permission to use our.
Your own money.
If you will. I mean, that's, that's it. I'm not asking you for money or anything else.
Madam Chair, again, I would say since they were not on the agenda, if he's wanting us to take action tonight, Alan?
Yes, sir.
I would ask, I would make a motion that we declare this an emergency and so we can, so we can address it and, and not violate any statute or treaty.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we grant the health department.
It's the food department. Well, it's, it'll be, the vehicle will be used amongst everyone. And probably, just so we're on the focal point, it's gonna get a little bit difficult with John Reese because he's got a little bit of setup the way he has to do it and everything else. But for all the other departments and everything else, we would all be of use in the vehicle.
But you want to use fifty-five thousand of your own funds to make a purchase of this vehicle?
Yes, sir.
That's my motion that they will.
Let's see, balancing that fund, just to know, do we know?
It still should be.
It's hundred grand or so, okay.
So are there any other questions? Any other questions? All right, I'm calling for a vote. All those in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you all.
You know, her, you were six.
Three hours and five minutes to get a vehicle.
I've been answering a long time since I've been putting this light going here.
Made the motion to adjourn?
Yes, I am.